Good evening. It is 5:30 on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 11123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am City Council President Kate McAllister presiding. Also present are Councilors Joel Aspero, Andy Groat, and Justin Dick. Mayor Shelby Rongstad and Councilor Deb Rule and Jason Wilker are absent. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any announcements from council?
Madam President, so I'd like to bring attention to a couple of different things. One, a big thank you to the citizens as well as the staff that were present at the open house on March 29th concerning the Division Street Improvement Project. I don't think that the Division Street Project has much contention, but it was great to see the participation of our citizens to come out as well as I really appreciate those open houses because it allows us to show off the brilliant, intelligent minds of our staff, and it gives us an opportunity to show the staff off. Along with that, a big thank you to Mayor Rockstead, which unfortunately he's not here, and Jennifer for on March 22nd with Chris Bessler on KRFY, they did a great Q and A and informative session that brought out some of the hot topics of the couplet. Chris asked the important questions. Mayor Rockstead, he actually is a critical part of that because he has the historical context because he's been here and participating in our local government and Sandpoint for so long. For him to be able to give that background was for me very helpful, and so I invite the citizens again to go to as many of the open houses that they can attend as well as listen to the March 22nd archived, I'd say podcast with Chris Bessler. So and then another thing, as I was, I stumbled upon an article by the reader, December 17th, 2015, and the headline is "Council Approved City Administrator," and this is a quote from our previous mayor, Mayor Kerry Logan. "I think it's awesome," said Mayor. "Jennifer fits the bill, her whole skill set and approach to the way that we like government." So my interest for being a council member was to focus on drinkable water, drivable streets, flushable toilets, and we had the pandemic. In all the leadership that I've been through, never once have I been in a scenario of a pandemic in government, and I firmly believe that we've got the right people, right staff, right leadership, right council, right citizens in place to help us continue with the drivable streets, drinkable water, flushable toilets. And Jennifer, I'd like to give a special thanks to you because I believe through your leadership with our staff through the pandemic, I honestly think that we were successful because of your leadership and because of the influence that you have within our community, within our people. So from me, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, if I might, I'd like to quick tell a personal story of something that happened to my family and I since the last time this council met as a cautionary tale to our community and our businesses and our nonprofits. Over the course of the past couple of months, our state has passed some extremely bad legislation that has enormous effects on our community in small rural communities and cities across the state. We are so very fortunate to have a community that gets passionate about what the city is doing and tends to participate. Now, could we use a little more participation? Absolutely. But we have a community that can rally and mobilize quickly on the happenings of this city and this council. What concerns me is, do we have that same passion and that same drive when it comes to knowing and understanding what the current legislative, what's on the current legislative table in Boise and what effects it might have on our community? Three weeks ago, Senate Bill 1120 was brought to my family's attention in a blink of an eye by our nonprofit Independent Bar and Restaurant Association, Idaho Fair. SB 1120 effectively eliminated the sale or transfer of our liquor licenses. It would be analogous of purchasing a home and a piece of property and selling it to somebody that could never sell it again. On the most conservative estimate, $130 million in personal assets, which by the way, the liquor licenses are recognized as personal property by the IRS, went poof. Liquor license owners have played by the state of Idaho's license quota system since 1957 in terms of obtaining them, operating them, and transferring them. The state has made a pile of money off of these transactions, and it's created a situation where hundreds of people around the state are on waiting list from city to city for a population increase across Idaho for the state to issue a new one. It's created speculators, and it's made it impossible for Idahoans to obtain them. The food and beverage industry has been in shambles since the COVID-19 shutdown, and we were wrongfully maligned by this state and this country. We lost our workforces, we lost our passion, as the cost of everything has been driven up. It was already tough before COVID, but it's brutal now. Most of us reinvest everything we have back into our operations on the slim hope that maybe, just maybe, one of our employees will be able to carry on our legacy and qualify for a small down payment with us carrying the majority of the contract to have some sort of exit strategy. These licenses were a part of over 1,300 Idahoans' personal assets that were destroyed. Now, I'm not going to cry about the finances. Okay, I was born a broke boy, I will die a broke boy, and that's fine. The measure of who I am and who I was is not determined by the amount of money that I have or end up with. To further the tale, upon finding out that 1120, we worked like dogs calling our representatives and our nonprofits with the fancy lobbyists to help them understand why the bill didn't make sense and that we could come up with a better compromise that would remove the current quota system, get licenses to anyone who wanted one, and to make sure that the current license holders were bade whole. Thank you, Mark Souter, and Sage Dixon, and Heather Scott for just picking up the phone and listening to us and for the way you voted. As we dive deeper into how this bill came about, we find that the head of the Idaho Beer and Wine Distributors Association authored the bill. The same people whose beer and wine we buy worked against us to get it moved. We find that House votes flipped at the very last moment over horse trading on quid pro quo legislation. I can't tell you how many people over the course of the last few weeks have said, "How naive I am," and that government just works this way. Maybe for you, but not for me. I tend to believe that all people are reasonable and willing to compromise as long as they are presented with the truth and are working towards the truth. A fair compromise could have been achieved, but you can't reach across the table to strike a deal if you don't even have a seat at said table. And this is just the bill that personally affected myself and my family, okay? We don't need to go too far to find legislative instances that have come through that are crippling our communities. I employ our community to use the same passion and vigor that you do with our city and make sure you know what legislation is coming down the pipeline. Don't make the same mistakes that I did and so many others did, trying to play from behind. Trusting our industry organizations to have our backs and lobby for us, a lobbyist is truly only as good as the metaphorical ammunition that you load them up with. And that's if you even know their name, or their email, or their phone number, or how to get a hold of them. If we can't make the backroom deals, we need to as communities in North Idaho. We need to blow up their inboxes with their voicemails, their emails, and metaphorically bring war to their front doors. Legally disrupt, boycott where applicable, demonstrate, and let them know that what's good for Boise and Southern Idaho does not necessarily make sense for us. And just because you have the density doesn't mean that you represent the northern half of the state. I urge the northern cities to work together and collaborate to not let some ding-dong from Pocatello determine our futures. And that's no disrespect on Pocatello. I love the great people of Pocatello, except this gentleman. Because right now, I'm not so sure that the Association of Idaho Cities or the resort cities are doing their jobs if we don't have a seat at the table. I urge our nonprofits and our for-profits to commit to legislative committees to understand what legislation is coming down the pipe, how it will affect our community, and how we can effectively pull up a chair at the table for reasonable compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Any announcements from staff?
Yes, Madam President, we have a couple of announcements tonight. Just a reminder that branch pickup is the week of April 10th through 14th, our citywide branch pickup. And a reminder to community members that all branches need to be placed out by Monday, April 10th. So our crews work their way during the week throughout the city, but they aren't doubling back. It takes them the entire week to get throughout the city, and they are in the process of spring cleanup beyond just branches, but generally work around the city. So branches need to be stacked lengthwise in the street or along the curb. This is a branch pickup. This is not leaf pickup. We do our leaf pickup in the fall. Over the last couple of years, we've offered leaf pickup a couple of times to try to guess what the weather is going to do. So we pick up before snow, but we're fighting that weather challenge, and all trees aren't dropping at the same time. So our leaf pickup is in the fall, but branch pickup is in the spring. And again, branch, maximum branch diameter is four inches and no longer than six feet. We're not picking up larger branches or stumps. Our equipment doesn't accommodate that. So that branch pickup is coming up in the next week, so hopefully people can get to that before the rain comes over the weekend. Upcoming permitted special events, Sandpoint Lions Club Annual Easter egg hunt is this Saturday in Lakeview Park, and we've issued the permit for that. In addition, we issued another annual permit for Assembly of God Church Easter event that is also this this weekend on Sunday at Great Northern Park. So two Easter egg hunts that kids look forward to every year. Next announcement, and I want to pull up this flyer because we're getting this posted up and so people can see all of our information on it. Doesn't want to cooperate with me here. Got a couple of things to share, so. Doesn't want to share that way either. All right, I'm going to read it off to you, but it will be up on our Facebook page tonight. It is up on our webpage tomorrow. We have our upcoming open house on April 27th. We've announced this a couple of times, but a reminder that will be at the Sandpoint Library. We're going to be in Meeting Room B from 11:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., and there's two topics happening at this open house. One is comprehensive plan, and a reminder that we're reaching our final review stages with the comprehensive plan, and public input is critical and important if you haven't participated in earlier phases. We will also be posting up the full plan review where people can actually go in and comment, read all the different sections, and provide comments that will come back. So that will be available on our website, and we've got a QR code for that, people to easily access that. At that open house as well, we will be doing also display boards and open information on the adopted multimodal transportation plan, including all of the concept solutions. So reminder that our multimodal plan is available up on our website. We've got a tab on our main page that has plans, master plans. So all of the city's current master plans are available there, including the multimodal plan. And specifically, any questions on Figure 23, that's the long-term east-west connection. We will have that up there and can have dialogue at that open house. So good opportunity to get more information, questions answered, and provide feedback on that. In addition, feedback and questions, also, people are welcome to come into City Hall anytime. We generally have staff available at the front counters. And we have a new website address, multimodal@sandpointidaho.gov. And so specifically for questions on our transportation plans, our multimodal plan, we've set up a new email address, so those aren't getting mixed in with other things, and we can get responses and collect all that information in one spot. And finally, tonight, we have Don Stasney back with us. Last week, our submissions were due for Phase 1 of the Downtown Waterfront Competition, and I don't want to steal Don's thunder here. We got eight different submissions, and he'll talk a little bit further about from who and what that looked like. And our jury met this week, Monday and Tuesdays, to select finalists to move forward to Stage 2. So I will hand it over to give, for Don to give you an update on that, and Don, I'll get this PowerPoint pulled up, I think, as well.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come before City Council tonight. Seems like every time I attend a meeting of Sandpoint Council, I learn something new, and Justin, you're exactly right. You have to kind of, unfortunately, we have to monitor everything that goes on legislatively all over us as to how it might impact us personally. The, I'd also echo what the counselor said regarding staff. I've worked with a lot of cities over the years, and I am just constantly amazed at both the quality and capacity of city staff under Jennifer and how supportive they've been as we've gone forward. That being said, we entered into Stage 1 of the design competition, which was a request for submittals from teams. And this was based on, on the competition manual that was put out, which reiterated the overall program, the design goals, guidelines, the regulations that we are going to operate under for the design competition. And this is, as you approved it about a month ago at this point. After your approval, we went directly into advertisement and also making sure that the registration was activated. Over the period of about three to four weeks, we had over 80 different registrants. All the resident, what that meant was that they were to get access into the competition manual, into the competition, and but it also began to indicate to us the variety that we were speaking to out regionally, locally, regionally, nationally, and in fact internationally. As Jennifer said, we received in the end eight different proposals. And these submissions were quite varied, except I would say that any one of them, any one of them could have taken on this, this project. So the charge to the jury really was finding the best of the best, or those that would give the most opportunity for Sandpoint and the citizens of Sandpoint to foresee what their future might be or what the future might hold. Because we were dealing with, as was in the program, with multiple different issues all the way from urban form to urban land use to stormwater, to infrastructure, to geologic kinds of situations, transportation. We found, as we would have expected, each one of the teams came in with a certain number of support consultants along with them. And what we've listed here are kind of the major ones that each of them had coming into the overall, or within their particular proposals. The process that the jury, that we had the jury use was, we were able to get the proposals out to the jury over weekend in electronic form, which gave them a chance to pre-read all the different submittals before coming together on Monday morning in virtual or Zoom, Zoom format. And when we did meet, we went over the overall rules and regulations, what was expected of the jury, what they were looking at. And then we had a discussion of the four, of the eight, excuse me, and went over each one as to what the jury felt were positives and are negatives of each and every proposal. We finished that job around 12:30, a little bit afternoon. Then we adjourned for individual study of the submittals until 3:00. We re, we met again at 3:00 virtually and went into a first analysis or vote or preference of, of those that we felt were the strongest to consider. And there were four that, that came out of the jury, that four different submittals that came out of the jury that were thought to be the strongest of those. We then adjourned for the afternoon to let everybody really go back and look at those four and in more depth and come back with the next morning, a preference of their top three. Our regulation said that the jury could pick three or four, but as we began to look at our overall budget on this, we had only budgeted for three, so we really pushed for getting it down to three. In the discussion that morning with the jury, we, after everyone beginning, after everyone saying what their preferences were, we actually had the jury each come up with their top three. And I have to say, as we went through the jury and asked each one for their position, every one of the jury unanimously picked the same three. These are not ranked. They are, they are the three that we, the jury has invited into the second stage. These three teams, GGLO with Bernardo Wills, Landscape Architect, First 40 Feet, which is more of a urban design planning firm. I think they're based out of Portland with, with Greenworks, Century West Engineering, Fear and Peers, and Northroot Architecture. It's a very local team in many ways with some good local knowledge of what's going on. Skylab, which probably represents a, is a firm based out of Portland, but represents some of the very best professionals out of the Northwest with Place, which is a very strong landscape and urban design firm, KPFF for Structural and Civil Engineering, which is one of the leading engineering firms in the Northwest. They included PAE with Luma, which is very interesting because they were one that began to think about lighting and how light affects or can be used as a design element. And they have a strong input from Eco Northwest, which is one of the best economic development, economic firms, economic analysis firms in the Northwest. So we have a stellar cast. I personally and professionally am very happy with this group. I think it will give us a range of, of solutions. At this point, as we move into Stage 2, we will, as I said before, I want to stress that this is the unanimous vote of the jury after two days of deliberation. We will be meeting with this, this group and begin our briefing of them for the Stage 2 as per our overall schedule and process. And we will have, we will meet with them the afternoon of Wednesday, 12th, and we have a our technical advisory group, which will make a presentation to them of what the issues are from their perspective. And so the staff we've been working with will have a chance to meet with each, with these designers and start them out. Wednesday afternoon, and this is what's on the board now, from 5:30 to 7:00, we will have a meet your designers night. We have found this as a device in our competitions as a way for the community to come in and, and see these folks and see what some of their past work is and get to know them closer and realize the quality of professionals that we are either bringing in or identifying locally to, to work on the, on the project. It'll be a fun evening. Invite the citizens to come in and enjoy themselves. We will give each team 10 minutes, and we put them on a stop, stop clock to talk about their teams, talk about their experience, and talk about what their approach might be. It will not be a presentation of, of designs for Sandpoint, but it will be a report on what they bring to the overall process. It will be at the City Hall. It will also be online if you can't make it to City Hall. But I guarantee you it will be an interesting and fun time to meet, meet the designers and the design teams. We will then meet again on the following day, on Thursday, and we will be working with many of our advisory team what individual projects begin to look like, what they want to share as far as explorations they have done. And also, we will do a little walk around as well of the area and with, with the teams, and we will go until adjourn about 3:00. But you will probably see a lot of the teams kind of around town for the remainder, at least the remainder of the day and maybe longer. I think that's about it. I, I would say we're right on schedule. I think we've accomplished the goals of Stage 1, and now is really getting them to work and beginning this idea of creating this vision for a downtown waterfront and the community.
Thank you, Don. Madam President, one thing I would, I would note with the Stage 2 teams for community members, we hope to see you at the open house. If not, we'll be streaming live, and it will also be on our YouTube channel. So it will be here in council chambers. We're going to be spreading teams out through City Hall because we do expect a good turnout for this event. So there will be short presentations by the designers, about 10 minutes. So the formal part of the So the formal part of the event will be the first forty five minutes, and then after that, they'll have display boards and teams about, and so people can dialogue with them one on one. But to give you some sense on familiar faces you'll see with these stage two teams, the GGLO Bernardo Wills Group and with Welch Comer and others, Bernardo Wills and Welch Comer were the group that designed our field parking lot and boat improvements down at War Memorial Field. That was also the group that did our concepts for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the different parks. So you will remember Dell Hatch has been here frequently, was born in Sandpoint, grew up here, is from here, now operating the business down in Quarter Lane. Welch Comer is also out of Quarter Lane, so we have a very local team with GGLO Bernardo Wills, very familiar with recent work of the city and community involvement in the city. First forty feet with Greenworks and Century West Engineering. Century West Engineering has an office here in Sandpoint. Ryan Lutman works out of that office. Most of us in the community know Ryan Lutman or familiar with him, so he is a part of this team. Work that has recently been done by Century West and Greenworks in the community would be the of phase one and phase two of the downtown revitalization. So they are also very familiar with the waterfront projects, did some initial concepts for the Farman's Landing project before we moved that into the Arts and Culture Master Planning efforts. So again, individuals in the community, familiar faces, you'll be seeing coming back from that team. And then finally Skylab with Place and others. We, the city at this point, have not worked with Skylab or any of these other partners, but Skylab is working on and has been working on projects up at Schweitzer. So people in the community have heard that name, might be familiar with them and their work up at Schweitzer. Place is a landscape architecture firm that has been working for the last several months to open an office here in Sandpoint. So they are planning on having a permanent presence here in Sandpoint, and we just had not had communications with them, although they've outreach because of knowing that the competition was open and we likely would see them there. So you will see the community will see a lot of familiar faces through these processes and you will see team members that have been very involved in city and community projects over recent years.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for announcements.
All right. I now have a proclamation to read this evening on Mayor Wrongstead's behalf, proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month in Sandpoint. Whereas April twenty twenty-three marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the passage of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. Whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since nineteen sixty-nine. Whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city of Sandpoint. Whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment. Whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability. Whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies. Whereas the laws of this nation and our state seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transaction involving housing. Whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, on this fifth day of April twenty twenty-three, I Kate McAllister, City Council President, on behalf of Mayor Shelby Wrongstead, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three to be Fair Housing Month in the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address counsel regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. If anyone here in the chambers wishes to speak now during the public forum or during any other portion of the meeting, you must complete a public comment form and hand it off to staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak during general public forum, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up or raised their hand on Zoom to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay. Do we take Zoom first or those in person?
Let me check for hands raised on Zoom. No hands raised on Zoom at this time.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up in in the chambers too? All right.
Yes, Kyle Schreiber.
Okay, let me read this before. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. I ask for your attention as I recite the rules and procedures for public comment during the meeting. Counsel may not hear or take testimony during the public forum on any planning and zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during a properly noticed public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or council or staff and do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front table as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside within Sandpoint City Libs. Madam Clerk.
Kyle Schreiber.
Hi, I'm Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident, and having attended the February first meeting online and the March fifteenth workshop, I have to say I was quite disappointed when twice our paid transportation consultant shrugged off this council's relevant questions about induced demand. I would like to thank Counsel Welker and Rule, if they were here, for being there and asking those questions on behalf of their constituents. Because study after study has shown that highway expansion does in fact induce demand. Not once have those promised benefits of highway expansion lasted more than a couple of years. Instead, cities are left with the debt, the maintenance costs, and the damage to their community. So much so, now many municipalities are saying enough is enough with highway expansion, and they're only looking at the better alternatives. But let me give you a real world example. I live just a couple of blocks from here, so if I need some groceries, I can just pop over to Winter Ridge. And I often walk because their parking lot can be a bit hectic. In fact, there's an example of induced demand right there. If they were to expand their parking lot, perhaps my decision to walk would not be so cut and dry. With the couplet, that walk would be twice as far and along a busy highway. And much like North Fifth, most pedestrians won't bother. And so Winter Ridge is going to need that bigger parking lot because many of us are likely going to be driving there a lot more often. And the same goes for downtown. A lot of the folks at the last meeting decided to drive despite knowing that it was going to be a busy meeting and that there's parking might be an issue. But what if there was direct and well-maintained pedestrian pass? Would that have changed people's decision to drive to that meeting? Well, studies have shown that it would. More than any other factor, looking at temperature, snow, rain, the fitness of the population, income, or education, the most important factor is the quality and availability of pedestrian infrastructure. One of the most bike-friendly towns in the world is in Finland, where it's darker and colder and snowier for much longer of the year than it is in Sandpoint. And yet, most children there ride their bikes to school all winter long because the quality infrastructure makes it safe and dependable. But here's another example. I have a neighbor in this neighborhood who is an essential worker here in town. She fell on some ice trying to navigate our subpar sidewalks and badly broke her ankle, so bad she had to have surgery. How do you reckon that knowledge that Sandpoint's pedestrian infrastructure is so unsafe that choosing to walk means risking serious injury? What effect does that have on our streets capacity or our parking capacity downtown? Could tell you she doesn't walk anymore. And when Miss Twee- Miss Tweaton presented the most recent survey, Sandpoint residents not only identified walkability as what they love about their town, but what they would like to see more of was shaving a minute or two off the crosstown commute in that survey? Not so much. People have said time and time again that Sandpoint is a walking town.
Thank you. Madam Clerk. Steve Holt.
Thank you, Steve Holt. I'm a Bonner County resident. I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to express some concern over the process in which we're supposedly going to amend the multimodal transportation plan, especially the the project that we've been talking about, the curve. And, you know, it started with a council member requesting a workshop, as we all know. We were then informed that the workshop was going to be to inform council, but that the citizens couldn't ask questions or speak during the meeting. And then a week later, it was suggested that we could submit questions and ask questions, you know, at the meeting, but there would be no discussion around it. And and just I wanted to point out in that particular meeting, you know, while I appreciate Amanda's thoroughness in the presentation that she gave, but, you know, fifty-six slides over three and a half hours, I think, was just a bit too much. And, you know, we could kind of see it in the audience as they sort of dwindled. So you know, if there's anything we can do to sort of have some brevity, you know, on that, it would be great. And then we were informed that there was going to be a workshop on the curve. And then we were then again informed that that workshop is now going to be lumped with a comprehensive plan, which is a huge, huge project in and of itself. And it just seems to me that we're sort of diluting our effort there by not giving some attention to the curve that it deserves some individual attention. So that's one thing. And I so I stand by my request, I think I made it like last council meeting, that we should define and codify for the citizens or our community what a workshop actually is. So when it shows up on the agenda and when it shows up in newspapers and things like that, that we all understand sort of like what we're getting into. The other thing is I wanted to just bring apart history just a little bit. Man, I'm running out of time. There were several resolutions that I felt like were important as I started dug in dig into the history. And one of them was a city resolution by the city to amend the Sandpoint Urban Area Transportation Plan, and it goes on to list that it agrees with the plan with the exception of the following. And then I'm not going to read it because I'm going to run out of time, but that's great. It's Resolution oh nine thirty-nine. And it was passed by Michael Bog, Helen Newton, John O'Hara, Steve Seddon, Kerry Logan, and John Reuter. Then in February of two thousand and fifteen, there was a resolution, and this had to do with the agreement to the city. And essentially, I'm going to run out of time. So I will have to leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr.
Unfortunately.
Madam President, there is a a member of the audience who is present who wishes to donate his three minutes to Mr. Holt.
Thank you very much. So back to where I was. So this resolution and within the agreement, well, now I can go back. So the previous resolution that the city adopted back in two thousand and nine, after this project had come up in two thousand and five or six and was unanimously rejected by the community, this council then went forward and made a resolution that basically said that the city council accepts this urban area transportation plan with the exception of the following. Okay. And it said that the city's commitment to multimodal transportation is significantly greater than the reflected that that reflected in the urban area transportation plan, that Highway Two be no more than three lanes, that the city of Sandpoint prefers roundabouts over signalized intersections where appropriate, and that the city adopt an intersection of service level D. Okay. And so this was passed by the city council and supported by our community. Okay. And that was back in two thousand and nine. Then in two thousand and fifteen, yet again, the city then negotiated with ITD and as a part of their cooperative development agreement with them, it accepted a level of service F on the side streets to Highway Two. And that the biggest part of that agreement was that the city could then not allow signaling adjustments that would increase their side street. So they had to give priority to Level Two, which again is supporting the notion that we postpone this project, that we live with what we have for a while till we fully understand the ramifications of what we're about to do. Okay. And that was agreed to by the city council at the time, which was Tom Eddy, Shelby Wrongstad, Bill Aiken, Shannon Williamson, Bob Camp, and now Deb Rule. Okay, so I'm just pointing out that this has been going on for almost two decades. And all the previous city councils up to this point have rejected this project. Okay. And the citizens felt like this project had gone away back in two thousand and sixteen. And so now for it to come back as a piece of the multimodal transportation plan where we had to go through, and Andy put it, you know, it's like we had a COVID situation here. People are like fearing for their life. We're not thinking about multimodal transportation plans, you know. And so I really feel, and I think it's evident in our community right now, that we have some serious questions about this project and that it has serious ramifications. We can go down to ITD and ask for an amendment to their STIP to put us on for funding in any year, in any year. So if we don't do it this August, we can do it the following August. And that's what I encourage you to have.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Be directed. Thank you.
Excuse me, Council President. I may, I believe those three minutes were for Mr. Schreiber. Is that correct?
Councilmember, the the additional three minutes?
Yeah, originally for Mr. Schreiber, so.
They were for Morgan Huppler?
If it's any to you, I wouldn't mind, but.
Along the same lines as what Steve Holt was saying, this council is at a pivotal moment in Sandpoint history. You have the chance to be the council that finally enacts the wishes of the people and prioritizes non-motorized infrastructure. Or you can be the council that bisected Sandpoint with an unpopular highway expansion in direct contradictory to the community's values. But the good news is that this isn't an now or never decision. We can put this project on hold until November or next year, or until those average daily trips reach that critical twenty thousand mark. But let's put it in writing. I'm here today to urge this council to pass a memorandum to IDT and to city staff, making it clear that Sandpoint does not want to prioritize the couplet and at this time, and we do not want IDT or city staff to pursue funding for it. And if things change, we can always change that decision. But once Highway Two has been expanded, there will be no turning back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber.
Rebecca Holland.
So here Rebecca Holland, Bonner County. And here, here to everything that was said about the multimodal couplet curve and all that. But tonight, I stand before you. I take no pleasure in standing before you to say how disappointed I am with this body. I want I once thought you genuinely cared about our area's families, but I've witnessed too many decisions which are undermining our family-friendly hometown. The latest bad decision is to tear down the Traverse Park playground equipment to make way for a very large, tall building for tennis. It's easy to say you'll rebuild it and add the splash pad, as you've been telling people. But you are not being truthful, knowing, but are you being truthful, knowing how funding works? But you are not being truthful, knowing, but are you being truthful knowing how funding works? There's no guarantee a half million dollar state grant will come in. Oh, sorry, kids, we took your swings down. It's all gone. But hey, we have a yuppie playground with a yuppie story theme in our master plan for you. Maybe next year or the next. Let's be real. Your plan can all fall apart as we've seen before with other plans. Case in point, the bike path for the kids through downtown core was, was once a solid plan, but poof, there it went. And we've already seen these planners waffling between enlarging the parking lot and the splash pad. I saw it, you saw it. And frankly, counsel, next year, half of you may not be holding your seat of power to be promising anything for our local kids. I want you to know I did a public records request for the geotechnical testing. The professional evaluation for both locations said, quote, based on our evaluation, the site is suitable for the planned development, meaning both building sites would have been fine at either location. But that's not what you or we, the public, were told by staff. Another reason, which I think is more to the truth, was the tennis community didn't want to lose their outdoor courts. And you know, I don't blame them. Repairs are needed, not demolition. So the hot question, oops. Oh, so the hot question remains, why should our kids have to lose their playground to double up the number of tennis courts from four to eight at Traverse? The Russell family's generous gift was intended to honor a man who once himself was a young child here. My impression reading about Jim Russell, who's characterized as the fun-loving Rex Sweeney in the Patrick McManus stories. I believe he'd be hard pressed to agree with tearing down this perfectly good playground. He'd appreciate seeing kids run back rambunctiously rolling down the hill and playing catch with friends in the open space as the kids were doing last week, while others hung from monkey bars. That's what Traverse Park is for this community, a place where kids don't need a theme to play. They make their own stories. A better decision needs to be made that will work for both the tennis community and our local children. I've started a petition and I'll be back to talk to you about this later.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'll check Zoom one more time for hands.
Thank you.
And not seeing any, that is all we had signed up for public forum this evening.
Thank you. That concludes the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million, eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents for regular payables. Does council have any questions or are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Well, this will be a roll call vote. Counselor Spurrel?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. Next is a public hearing on proposed new and revised water and wastewater fees. During the council's February fifteenth and March first meetings, staff and the city's consultants provided rate study presentations with the mayor announcing that public comment would not be taken at that time as a public hearing would be scheduled for this evening. A notice of public hearing was published twice in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on March twenty-first and twenty-eighth. Before we get underway with the public hearing, I will first yield the floor to Utilities Director Greg Lanning.
Thank you, Madam President, Greg Lanning, the Director of Utilities. And first of all, unconcended agenda was the, just real quickly, the Forest Management Services contract. And that contracts with Inland Forest Management. And Mike Walcott in particular, and for those of you that have been here for quite a while, you probably know Mike as well because he served this community real well, I believe, in the last several years, twenty years plus. And, and will be then leading a group or team from inland forest to manage or help manage our, our watershed and forest. The reason I wanted to bring that up was because Mike came here tonight. I just want to say thank you and appreciate your, your having a little. The, the rate study, I'll have to, you'll have to pardon me as I go back to my station because we have a slideshow for that tonight that'll guide us through. But also I want to thank, you know, all of our partners, even though I'm representing the utility, obviously, and the rate study. You all know there's quite a bit more behind that. Now, we have our local team with Jennifer and Sarah in particular, but many others, including Michelle at the front desk, who many of the community know that, and pay their bills out. She's, she's been informing us all along. This process has taken over a year and a half to get to this point in particular. And this presentation tonight is just simply a digestion of that. This is a public hearing to hear about the rates themselves tonight. And so you'll only see about ten slides. It is a summary of the previous two council meetings that we've had, which each were thirty slides each or plus. So this has been digested into ten slides. And then many of these, you're going to say, well, you'll, if you, are the repeat of those previous presentations. So there shouldn't be anything new that you see tonight, just an opportunity to ask additional questions if you have any. And then, of course, as a public hearing, it's open to the public for comment as well. A little bit backwards and perhaps is in the packet also, in addition to the, the PowerPoint is in the packet. Council reports in the packet. But also there were a couple of comments, written comments, and I want to address those first and answer them as best I can. But it'll also give you an opportunity to listen through the presentation to those particular questions as well. One of them was eliminating usage charges will eliminate incentives to conserve. This is a good topic during council, and we've talked about this before. And if we were to do that, for instance, it would, it would, in this message, say promote additional water use, and we would have additional expense to expand the system. We still have the conservation rates in there. And I'll address those in one of the slides in particular. And so we haven't eliminated the volume charges, and we still have the tiered rates to incentivize conservation. A second one was one that we all feel certainly and is that we don't like seeing any rates increase. And so this one in particular was in discussion of sewer rates. And, and so you'll have to, and this process, once again, is taken over a year and a half, including a workshop in particular, where we looked at six or seven values, you know? Do we have growth pay for growth, you know, and, and what about lower incomes and these kinds of things? And so, and conservation was one of those. And we kind of measured that as a, as a group during that workshop in particular, but through the year and a half to get to this point. I know as staff, we've had these conversations as well. What impact will it have on these if we do this? And so we're trying to, yeah, we have raising rates, but we're trying to make them as fair as possible. You have to keep in mind, the last rate study was in two thousand and ten, quite a while ago. Think about inflation only over those period. And especially the cumulative inflation at two to three percent. Water rates were raised three point eight percent as an aggregate across the board. Sewer rates nineteen percent. You'll hear more on this, mostly to ramp up for the construction of a sewage treatment plant. And then finally, this statement also, you know, was concerned that we're using these enterprise accounts for other uses. And is that legal? And the answer is absolutely not legal to use them for other uses. And so it's a very transparent process, not only through the budget, but through audits, et cetera, to look at that, to ensure that we spend these monies in the funds that they were raised. And with that, I'll get up. My machine here. PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully these little bars disappears. Jennifer taught me that last time. Still learn.
A lot for me tonight.
And maybe we've got a slide before that. We've got several. Look at the study components. Again, we're only looking at ten slides. There aren't very many. There's a little bit of history, you know, because it's always good to know what we have done in the past and how it affects what we're doing today. And a summary towards the end regarding the, these four components, you know, my favorite slide throughout this process. January twenty twenty-two. And here they are. The very first part was to look at what are our revenue requirements and, and the NOS, the new user facility fees. These were exercises that we could do. FCS, the consultant, by the way, Angie's on the line with us tonight, and I think Brooke might be joining us as well. The folks from FCS that you're used to seeing in addition, our other partners. And now that I think about it, I forgot, in our extended family, our other partners, obviously, are the mayor and the council. Always inputting. And I need to also tell you that as, as staff, we've had, we've been answering questions related to rates ever since the beginning. So we've had the discussion, you know, throughout this year and a half. But especially FCS being on the line, that's the point I wanted to make. And if we have questions that we really need to drill down, Angie and Brooke are here to help answer those. The first part of the study was revenue requirements and new user facility fees. That was, I have a schedule in the later slide here, but we tackled those early on last summer. And, and the revenue, both of these, I want to say are simple, but I know they're not simple exercises, but they're very direct exercises. We're doing this. We're earning this, we're bringing in this kind of revenue. What do we need to make up the difference? That was the revenue side of it. And then new user facility fees are very similar too. And that is how much additional capacity do we have in the system and how much does it cost? And so relatively, again, simple processes, I think, at least to understand. From there, and what you've heard over the last two presentations were these cost of service analysis and rate design. And we also had conclusions related to those. And you'll see those in the, in some slides as well. Back in January, we started, I mentioned several months to forecast water and sewer. Revenues, June eighth. There were a couple other dates in here. You brought me back in July twentieth also for a council rate study update. And that's where we went, not to go into a whole lot of detail, but in the water side from three percent to three point eight percent. And there was a, a discussion of capital. And, and the idea there was we can really only legally affect capital within our jurisdiction. The water system and the water service area extends beyond the city limits. And there was a good discussion, I believe, on, you know, which capital should we or can we include legally, you know, within our jurisdiction? As a result of that, then the increase or the revenue requirements for water revenue increased from three percent to three point eight percent. They said, well, why did it increase? Well, the original ones were considering debt service and these kinds of things. So after we took out debt service and were cash only, it increased only slightly. But the good news is it was a cash basis for the water utility. October first is through the budget process, we set rates. And that during that process, we've seen then the nineteen percent increase in sewer and the three point eight percent increases in water across the board. April fifteenth, cost of service rate, these are the two recent ones for water and sewer, March first. So back in that background and those first two items or elements of the rate study, revenue requirements, and I've mentioned these already, you can see across the top, again, the slide we've seen before, three point eight percent increase needed in the water to meet revenue requirements, you know, nineteen percent. This also shows how those proposed rates over time in the financial plan will be, and those will be presented each year, you know, as to their need and for approval. New, new user facility fees in water, seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five per MCE, that's a meter equivalent, meter capacity equivalent. And this is for the smallest meter, the three quarter inch meter. As meters grow in size, that new user facility fee almost increased, well, it increases by the square. So it increases not beyond linear, they get expensive for large meters. And that's because the capacity of that meter is much larger, given the area that and amount of water that can flow through it. Because it can, has the potential to draw more water, it has the potential then to affect the capacity of the, of the plant. And so that's that buy-in side of that. What is the cost of buying to your existing capacity? Sewer ERU, six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars per equivalent residential unit. Each is based on just basic, you know, what does a house use? From there, you know, the formula goes, you know, if it's ten times the size of a house, it'd be ten times the size for this ERU. These were the conclusion slides that we saw over the last two presentations. When we get to cost of service. You might remember that that's the equity allocation. You know, we look at these customer classes, in this case for water, single family, multifamily, commercial. You get these bar charts, and so graphically, we can see that. Those dash lines are the five percent average, you know, and so the goal is to get them within that five percent. If they vary more than that, up or down, then in an equity sense, in the cost of service analysis, those then need to be adjusted. And so you can see the lower ones, irrigation, for instance, needs to be adjusted up, which means irrigation costs due to this analysis are going to go up. But, and same with wholesale rates. Multifamily, you know, found to be a little bit more than what it needs to be, so it decreases over time, recommended. The chart below then shows that three point eight percent. Even though this work is being done to these individual classes, there's still the revenue requirement stays under that cap of three point eight percent. So everything's being adjusted underneath that three point eight percent. So it's neutral in that sense. Although individual classes underneath that will see increases or decreases. We looked at sewer in the same way. The customer classes was slightly different, residential, multifamily, commercial, one grease and or commercial and non-grease, commercial two grease. Those are real interesting categories, like grease, non-grease. It has to do with the strength and its effect on both the sewer lines itself as well as the sewer plant. The same deal, you can see, geez, in terms of equity, that, that commercial class, you know, was below the average cost of service and therefore has to be adjusted up, or is adjusted up in this analysis. The other two classes, residential and multifamily, are looking to be adjusted downward. Same table, nineteen percent, it's all working under that cap. Also, by the way, you can see then, years projected out, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, also are recommended nineteen percent increases for sewer. Yes, those are steep, but those are also headed for a sixty-five million dollar sewer treatment plant replacement, very expensive infrastructure work needed. So it's quite a bit more on the sewer side, obviously, than it is on the water side. We can, as a matter of fact, since we only have ten slides, and if there are questions, we can certainly flip around and go back to any of these as, as questions arise as well. This is a slide we looked at. When we get down to the rate design, then it's how do you collect the revenue? And And um yeah, these ones, uh, we we've seen the and the repeat of some of these bullet points as you read through, and you recognize the three point eight percent. The uh here in the residential tier, and this is where the conservation blocks were originally designed, they're still in there, but yes, they have changed, they're highlighted in yellow there. What used to be zero to three thousand gallons is now zero to six thousand gallons. You know, that that's a benefit, uh, it was recommended and it made sense in the rate study because for a couple reasons. Um, the average use of uh, of a single family is in that range, you know, it's more like five thousand. So it kind of makes sense to keep that original tier in there. When we start using more water, especially in the summer when we're irrigating, that's where we can look at conservation and really be effective in doing that. The other conservation, you know, on your base rate, you know, for monthly water use. It's kind of inside the house, if you will, you know, it's what we can do deposits and shower heads and these kinds of things to conserve water. But we can get very effective in the irrigation side of it, and that's why those tiers reflect that, you know, the higher use during the summer especially. Uh, uh, you know, promotes conservation. Uh, these are phased in over time, that's those are those two charts we were looking at. So over a period of years, uh, you know, portions of it are are phased in, uh, minimum usage, uh, the fourth bulge. We used to have, I want to get this right, because one's two thousand, yes. We used to have a minimum charge for three thousand gallons, whether you used it or not. So we eliminated that, it didn't really make sense. Uh, it it should be, and if you need it, in the fixed charge, you know, what is our fixed charge every month? Uh, for rate stability and other reasons versus just, you know, saying we're going to bill you for three thousand, I think that's a very good cleanup. It also kind of shows up in that zero to six thousand, well, it used to be zero to three thousand. Kind of reflects another three thousand gallons up to six thousand gallons as well. So that's what that means by uh minimum usage for residential class. These are no rates for multifamily and industrial classes. Uh, just simply didn't make sense to any of the team, quite frankly. Um, and uh, so we we kind of cleaned it up and changed that, and we made it more efficient efficient and tried to condense where we could, uh, commercial classes in this case. Have been condensed and now include industrial and large user all in the commercial class. We also look, just so you know, that they weren't radically different, you know. What did they pay before and what did they pay after when they're condensing that to make sure there wasn't any, you know, serious bogies in there, so we did vet that. And then wholesale rates, um uh, per contract is what it says here, wholesale is a is a class just like the other ones. Uh, we looked at that, uh, those bar charts. Um, it's and it just turns out there's a there's three wholesale customers. Um, there are each one does have a contract, so the bullet does say it properly, but wholesale rates are looked uh in the same way across the classes, just like others. What we learned also during that one presentation, though, is the methodology has changed in the wholesale rates. And I'm gonna it's now, it used to be a cash basis that we use, you know, within the city, but now it's a utility-based approach. Which uh more closely represents the system use. It's not, uh, they're not the owners of the system, and in in essence, you have to think of it as renters of the system. And so that's what utility-based approach is. It's a uh industrial, it's an industry standard methodology from the American Water Works Association. And so it's an accepted standard to in which or how to handle wholesale rates. And it's entitled Principles of Water Rates, Fees and Charges in one manual, so it can easily be looked up. And uh, you know, if if interested to see how those wholesale rates were developed. In that, uh, there's a fixed rate and a variable rate, just like there are in the other rates, the fixed rate you pay every month. Fixed rates were based on depreciation and return on investment. This also helps then represent our and pays for our debt services, an example. Variable rates then point to O and M. And so there still is a variable rate, and there's a volume charge. And so there is conservation out there, if they need to, they can reduce rates in the wholesale category by reducing water use. There were right, um. This one's interesting, uh, it was similar, um, we uh, we have um a process, or at least we used to, or, you know, perhaps after council considers this and approves it. Uh, by recommendation, but we used to do winter averaging every year, you know, we would take the uh three lowest months of what and and measure or the three months in the winter of your water use. And that is, you're not using any outdoor water, and therefore all the water used goes down the drain. And so you average those three months, and that becomes then your sewer rate throughout the year. It's called winter averaging, you can imagine with uh all the accounts we have, you know, how cumbersome that is. And also how variable it can be. You know, some houses don't have any use during the winter, as an example. Or you might have your whole family back that's washing laundry all winter, and then maybe a little higher than it should be. So you can see the variability there alone, but also because we're doing so many of these. Uh, there's uh, there's, you know, room for error as well. So by eliminating that and then making that a fixed charge, you know, not doing the winter averaging and just doing a reasonable fixed charge, which, by the way, in a survey, ten of the twelve local areas, you know, other water sewer uh, or sewer uh utilities within our area, ten of the twelve do fixed trades, and I know in my past and my experience as a in other towns that we've always had a fixed trade. So in this case, we're moving from a, you know, that uh winter averaging to fixed trade, that's what that is. Some of these, you know, we had to uh phase in over time, so by twenty twenty eight, they'll all be the same, but for those uh greater than two thousand gallons, we're going to keep them in there, that's kind of a remnant of the old system. If we were to do that all at once, it would be too much of a shock, quite frankly, to that particular rate category. Uh, multifamily fixed rate. Implement cost of service. Eliminate build minimum usage, same thing as water, we have, we build for, in this case, you remember water was uh, three thousand gallons, we had a minimum usage of two thousand gallons in the sewer, so very similar. Uh, slide ten. So we updated NAFs and we looked at revenue, and then over the last couple of meetings, we looked at those last two categories of cost of service and rate design. Uh, Madam President, that that President, that uh concludes my presentation, and we'll stand for questions or the remainder of the public hearing process.
Thank you. Does Council have any questions for staff?
Madam President. So Greg, thank you for that, I appreciate it, um, I've grappled with this many different ways, uh, being a commercial to user with Greece and knowing plenty of commercial users, understanding that the school is our school system is one of our larger irrigation users. Um, and despite not necessarily paying our fair share, this is a tough pill to swallow. Uh, to see some of these rates jump up the way they have. Um, but I'm also grappling with the fact that we know that we need a new sewer system, a wastewater management system, I think that's been abundantly clear for the last decade, or at least the last sixteen years that I've been here. I have a question that I don't know if it's come up before, specific uh specific to the sewer rate design changes. We purchased a piece of property not long ago for the proposed new sewer treatment plant. Is there any money in the coffer or the potential sale of that piece of property that could help offset some of this, uh, the increase of the nineteen percent to our community to help us a little bit? Um, prior to exacting these fees? Does that make sense? Are you following?
Yes.
Okay, is there, is there a way to do that? Is that on the table?
Uh, ultimately, in the near future, Council is going to need to make a decision about um retention or disposition of that Baldi property, which, to your point, uh, counselor was purchased for a regional wastewater treatment plant. At the time that Council uh adopted the uh the wastewater treatment plant update, it was determined that that site would not be used, and in fact, the site would remain at the current location at Lakeview Park. Therefore, that property is uh excess property to wastewater treatment fund at this point, or wastewater fund, and it has no reason to continue to hold that property. Um, and so uh options would be disposition of that property to um, the outside putting that up for bid, there's the specified process in Idaho code, we can't just sell to a single party that is interested in that. Follow um property disposition code by the state of Idaho with funds returning into wastewater treatment plant. Should Council want to retain that property for another city purpose? That property would need to be purchased by general fund or other nonutility dollars to retain that property. And yes, it would go back into the fund balance for wastewater treatment plant, any proceeds or wastewater treatment fund, and then that's figured in when calculating rates for ratepayers.
Do we have any idea on what the last, when, I guess, when the last appraisal on that piece of property and potentially what that amount of money would look like? And what that offset could potentially do to the rate, to reduce the sewer rates?
Last time we looked at a value of that property, it was valued at approximately a million dollars.
If we were to, and maybe Andy, you could help me out with this, if we were to make a decision tonight on these rates. Could we then direct staff to move forward with finding a uh, an alternative of selling this piece of property and using that money to help reduce these rates?
Uh, Council could always direct staff to initiate the process that Jennifer suggested that's provided under Idaho code. Um, we can sell it, but we we have to get an appraisal and then sell it, you know, at the highest uh price uh that's available, you know, available. Um, we do need to have an appraisal because we need to know what the value is, but there is a process for doing so, and the Council can certainly make that decision to do that in the future.
Do you, uh, do you have any understanding of what the timeframe on something like that would look? The last time we were looking at appraisals, everybody was so busy, this was a eight to six-month process to get an appraisal done, so there was something that, um, well, I guess I'll just finish with that question. Do you have any uh time concern wise?
Oh, the city has gotten approvals on that property in the past, so it's a matter of just updating appraisal. Our timeline for getting appraisals, and we did have an appraisal recently on another piece of property is six, about six weeks.
Okay.
Um, and an update uh to an existing appraisal, I suspect, is more in the range of three to four weeks.
Can you tell us a little more about the Idaho code in terms of how we would have to sell this property? We we understand that there's at least two user groups out there right now, the the disc golf course, um, as well as, I believe, the Nordic group uses it for some cross-country skiing in the wintertime, I believe. Um six months seems like a reasonable amount of time to get with those parties, um, prior to the appraisal. And give them an opportunity to bring a deal to the table once the piece of property is appraised?
Number one, the the Council would have to declare the property surplus, so there's no use useful uh purpose for retaining it within the city assets. Once we do that, we would get an appraisal, uh, we would advertise bits, uh, we would have to go through that formal similar to a procurement process. At the top of my head, can I tell you exactly what it is? No, I'd have to look at statute, but there's a process for doing that. And um, we would be obligated to take the highest bid.
Okay, I can we maybe get a little clarification on this to the context of why we didn't put the original uh, or the new wastewater treatment center plan over there? Was that my understanding that running utilities next to the train track was extremely cost prohibitive?
It was what it was going to take to um, to run infrastructure up to that site, which would ultimately pump down to the existing site for discharge. And um, at the time that that was considered as part of the master plan, that was an estimated additional cost for the wastewater treatment plan of thirty million dollars.
On top of the sixty, roughly sixty-five million that we're thinking it's going to cost to put in a new one?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, does the city have uh alternative plans with that site as of today? Do we have it in any of our planning, uh, any of our planning documents uh to do anything with here in the near future?
Not currently.
Okay. That's suffice us.
Any other questions?
Just to comment, I know the disc golf company or the, they'll be emailing us. Listening to this, so I think Angie's on the line also, I don't know if this counselor, what you had suggested, how that would help if Angie's got anything to add into that, and the, so two things, I I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, it would, I would feel more comfortable if we were a larger body to decide that, as well as uh million dollars. We have sixty-five million dollar watermark that we have to get to, you know, as much as I the million bucks might help, I don't know necessarily what we're doing with that property. Um, I appreciate your your insight on trying to figure this one out, but that's like drops in the bucket. So Angie, do you have anything to add to what Counselor had mentioned?
I do, thank you, and so, you know, uh, I think any type of revenue that is available that can help offset any type of costs is always something that we all want to be thinking about and and doing. Absolutely, and you know, the particular costs that we're looking at are quite significant, and so in terms of the overall impact, it would likely be smaller. Really, what is increasing the rates is the debt service associated with the plant. And that particular debt service is going to be ongoing for some time, for for about twenty years, and so that is the need to be able to support that, that's the annual debt service on that at that wastewater treatment plant is going to be one of the cost burdens that the sewer utility is currently trying to increase. Be able to meet, and so that's kind of one of the the utility is unfortunate in terms of the overall impacts. What I did want to mention is that the nineteen percent that is currently approved was uh approved October first of last year, and so we're not looking at increasing rates in this particular uh presentation, really what we were looking at in terms of the rate changes is staying with the already approved nineteen percent, and all we're doing is shuffling between what particular customer classes we would be collecting that nineteen percent across. And so I just want to make that clarification that we're not we're not approving another rate nineteen percent rate increasing at this time, we're really saying we've already approved the nineteen percent. Now we're just looking at equity as well as rate design changes within classes to determine how to collect that nineteen percent, and it doesn't need to shift differently. And what we're showing is it does need to shift slightly differently at this particular time, so I also just wanted to make that clarification as well.
I appreciate the clarification.
Madam President. For for clarification and to build on um Angie's comments. Um, the plan was to come back to Council um with regard to that particular property in advance of looking proposing anything relative to taking on debt or moving forward with um, loans, anything else with the wastewater treatment plant. As part of our comprehensive plan update process, one of the things that will be uh upcoming uh will be a discussion about our area of city impact. And ultimately, the boundaries of that and um looking at sub-area planning and related to that. Uh, one of the reasons that uh nothing has moved forward at this point uh relative with the Baldi property is because we're not considering taking on additional debt at the moment in the wastewater treatment uh fund, so there is a bit of time and relative to where the city might grow in the future. Consideration for what park needs, open space needs um should really be included in that um A C I consideration, and so that's the reason it hasn't moved forward to Council prior.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg, for the presentation, and thank you, Angie, for being on the line, I know we've had um, several of the presentations, and it was all extremely enlightening, I think I know more about sewer and water now than I ever have, but uh, thank you. We will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. For those in the room who wish to speak, if you haven't already, please complete a public
For those in the room who wish to speak, if you haven't already, please complete a public comment form and hand it to the clerk. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time. For the record, any written comments received prior to agenda posting were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to testify?
One moment, Council President. Madam President, we do have a number of members of the public who have signed up to speak during the public hearing. I do not have any hands raised on Zoom at this time, but do we, we do have some members of the public chambers.
Okay, I will read the rules. Please note the following rules and procedure for the public hearing. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise and comments or exclamations from the audience. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or council or to staff and do not approach the dais. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside within Sandpoint city limits. Madam Clerk, who's our first speaker? Brett Darnell.
I would like to defer my turn, time to Tim Blankenship.
Molly O'Reilly.
Council President, Council members, thank you for your service. That's a big job. I want to, um, say that I appreciate that you're making it so that multifamily isn't overpaying for water. You talk about affordable housing and yet multifamily units have been charged more proportionately than single family. And that makes it really hard for landlords to have affordable housing. Um, I remember this from park cottages very well, but in wastewater, you have a category called zero to three bedrooms. If you've got park cottages with ten studio apartments and six one bedrooms, and each of them is paying the same as a three bedroom would. What are you trying to accomplish here? What, what is really going on? I think a zero to three bedroom category in almost anything isn't very reasonable. Cause those are huge differences in how many people are likely to be living there and using water and sewer. And I hope, you know, you're simplifying some of the categories. There was some concern about would that reduce conservation? Just make sure you've got a monitoring system. Look at it in a year. How is conservation going? Is it better or worse than it was under the old system? You've got the ability to, to learn from what you're doing, and I think that will be really good for all of us. The minimum rate used to be there. I remember all these council hearings from all the way back to, I think, twenty, two thousand two. It was there to catch snowbirds like me. So that we would pay our fair share of the infrastructure year round. I do have a house sitter, so I am, but I think having that in the meter charge is a great way to handle that. Because it doesn't look like you're being charged for something you're not paying. I do see that all multifamily units are being charged the same sewer rate. Again, whether it's a zero bedroom or a three bedroom or more. And I wonder, I wonder if ultimately that produces equity. Because affordable housing is often in multifamily units. And, um, then on a longer range thing, regional sewer, we're going to be subsidizing sprawl. Sewer sprawl follows sewers and roads. And so you are controlling sewer by keeping sewer inside the city. You are doing some controlling of sprawl in this area. And sprawl costs the central city. It costs the central city. So before you really decide to regionalize the sewer system, please think about that. Thank you very much.
Woody Sherwood.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselors. So this is really, it's a really hard question to understand because and I, I probably missed a few bus stops along the way because I was out of the country for the hearing last fall and and stuff, but it's my understanding, we're not having a forty five percent increase on the sewer with nineteen percent last fall and another twenty four percent this spring. Is that correct? Was that from the consultant just a moment ago? Or is that what is happening? That's just, it's just a question I'm asking. We don't need an answer right now. And then the other questions that I would ask you guys to investigate is how much of this increase is for operations and maintenance versus the future expansion? So you really understand where, where that's, what part of this increase is being allocated out? The other is, is what's the bonding capacity of the city? Can, can you guys bond this? So when it's time to do this, you can put the cost on the people at that time versus having everybody pay this mythical increase in fees to go into some magic golden pot someplace. And maybe it will help, maybe it won't. And, um, another comment would have is enough increase for the sewer should be higher. It's only six thousand bucks right now for for a new utility, what do they call it? New, new utility FF enough increase at sixty two hundred or something. Why isn't that ten thousand? Why isn't that twelve thousand? Those are the people that are going to be driving the need for the new sewer plant. And, you know, they need to be paying for that. And then my last thing would be is, is it seemed like we should be looking for opportunistic times on interest rates and construction costs. And try and get this thing going when it makes sense to do it because right now we're kind of coming to a time now for the cost to build it or gone way up. The interest costs are going way up. So all of a sudden we're like dog chasing the car and hopefully doesn't catch it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Tim Blankenship?
Give me just a moment. I'll set that at six minutes. Hello, my name is Tim Blankenship and I am the, uh, the chairman of the Serengeth Water District. The Serengeth Water District was, is a taxing district that was originally formed in nineteen sixty eight. We currently have two hundred and twenty five users. The districts, uh, were your largest wholesale water user. The district's been served by the city of Sandpoint since its formation in nineteen sixty eight. I first want to thank FCS group and all the Sandpoint staff for putting together the new water rate study. I know that took a lot of work. We all know that water rates increase over time and the district is not opposed to the increases that are proposed. Uh, but the wholesale water users should have been part of this process. At no time have we been invited to participate and provide input in the study. As a wholesale user, Serengeth Water District use it currently passes the cost of the city meter and the water used directly to our customers. We also add an operation and maintenance fee to complete their bill. The only way to equitably divide the new fixed fee between our two hundred and twenty five customers is by dividing it equally. When we do that, we start looking at what the water bill will be for, say, a six thousand gallon user versus some higher users, higher gallonage users. For a six thousand gallon a month user, they'll see an increase of about twenty four percent to their bill. A, someone who uses twenty thousand gallons, their water and their lawn doing whatever. They're, they would actually see a ten percent decrease in their bill because everybody's paying the same flat fixed fee. And then everybody's paying the reduced water rate per thousand gallons. So that's the way it works. The more water you use, the less it costs you per thousand gallons. So the proposed fee does not promote conservation, the post flat fee. I watched the February fifteenth council meeting online. And I just want to point out that in the, the council agenda request form, number two, it says name of any individual or group that will be directly affected by this action. Well, we're the largest wholesale water user. It seems like that maybe we would have been invited to make comment on this as it went. I mean, we're not opposed to paying our fair share, but this flat rate thing doesn't work. It doesn't, it doesn't conserve water. Um, during that time, Councilwoman Rule noted that the fixed usage did not appear to promote conservation and there was no incentive to do so. And that's exactly right. Uh, Mr. Lanning approved by stating that Serengeth is restricted in both meter size and main by contract. Sorry, meter size and main size by contract, thus restricting the amount of water the district could use. Nowhere in the existing contract being, insisting contract or the contract being negotiated, are we restricted in main or meter sizes? In perfect, in fact, the proposed contract states that improvements to our system are restricted only by DEQ and Idaho code. It was suggested by Ms. Stapleton and FCS group that on, at the February fifteenth meeting, that Serengeth could promote conservation by implementing their own tiered water rates. We are already, we are already per this study numbers which adding twenty six and a half percent to our rates. Implementing a tiered system on top of that is, is more than our customers are going to be able to do. I mean, it's that, is it going to be thirty percent? What, how much are we going to be adding? Serengeth is bound by the same Idaho code as a city when it comes to rate increases. Increases greater than five percent require advertisement and a public hearing. We're a taxing district. The current contract and the one being negotiated both include ninety days notification for this very reason. We assume that once we receive notification by mail of the new rate increases, we will have ninety days before those rates take effect. The Serengeth Water District is wholly within this, the city's ACI, the area of city impact. I personally had three meetings with Greg Lanning. And one of which included Jennifer Stapleton. In which we discussed the city and, and we discussed the contract. But we also discussed the city possibly taking over the district to avoid service conflicts. Where we have a city district overlap. And so that the city could more easily move into the ACI. I didn't see any place where this option was even considered in the rate study. And it should, because if we're, if we become if we get taken over by the city, there's about five thousand dollars a month that the city's not going to see in revenue from us directly. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. We look forward to seeing the final copy of the water rate study.
Thank you. Frank Cafferty.
My name is Frank Cafferty. Um, I work with Serengeth Water District. I also work with Northside Water Users Association. Uh, we up until recently, we hadn't had any notification that there was going to be um, the sort of a rate increase. Um, I, I would just ask council to reconsider the the percentage by which, by which the rate increase, the rates would increase. Because the, um, the citizens, the customers that we have, I think are going to be hard pressed to, um, add an additional twenty to thirty dollars a month onto their current water bill. So, um, that's all I have for this evening. It's just uh, we, we haven't had any notice and we'd like some time to, um, consider. And we also have to have a, uh, like, we'd like, we, we're not bound by a district by the district rules, but we'd, we'd like time to, um, work with our customers to make sure that everybody knows what's coming down the pipe for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, that is all who signed up to speak during the public hearing. Thank you, Madam Clerk. With all those who wish to speak having been heard or with no one indicating a desire to testify, the public hearing is now closed. We're now moving on to old business for deliberation and consideration of the proposed new water and wastewater fees and amendments to the city fee schedule. Council, any questions, any deliberations, anything you'd like, final comments?
Right, we, I think that there's a lot of questions that we might, sorry, Council, Council President. I'd like the staff to address a lot of those. There were, there were many questions in there, so hopefully you guys were able to mine some of those. Um, I, I apologize for not getting due diligence with the notification. I mean, it's not, it's our responsibility. That's, it's horrible. Uh, however, uh, we've been talking about this for a really, really long time, but it's no excuse. As well as we haven't had a rate increase, uh, in, I think, like thirteen years. It's been a really long time, which is again um, our responsibility to monitor those increases. And we've, we've got a wastewater treatment plant that we, we desperately need to fund. I, I think that our, our service group has done a great job with the analytics and, and finding uh, fair equitable rates and condensing and simplifying. Uh, it does, I do have some concerns that it, it does still appear that we've got some customers uh, that we heard tonight that maybe somehow, um, fell through the cracks or haven't been heard enough. So I would like staff to address some of those as well as I I want to get that wastewater treatment plant moving and funding. And, um, I know that I'm a benefactor, I'm a benefactor of many of those others that have come before me that have paid into our systems for us to have clean water, to have schools and I'm, I'm ready for a new wastewater treatment plant. So thanks.
So
I, uh, it'll be Greg who's on the lead for most, but Madam President, for, um, to hear for clarification on a couple of issues. Serengeth Water District is in our ACI, but is also in the city of Dover and the city of Dover's ACI. So it is actually in two jurisdictions and two jurisdictions is the hours. Um, and so there are complicated issues with Serengeth Water District. Um, but it is not just in the city's ACI.
Did that answer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other deliberation discussion?
Council President, I wrote quite a few down, but I'll just throw them out there for clarification, for staff to be able to respond. Uh, Molly brought up the zero to three bedroom. If I understood you correctly, Molly. If it was one bedroom, they'll be paying just as much if it was a three bedroom place. Can, can staff speak to that on the charts? Uh, what I thought I heard was that wasn't equitable.
Madam President, uh, thank you for that, counselor. And I, I appreciate also you having taken notes for the questions that you think important to answer as well. And, um, I'm trying to sort through a few of these and I, you know, um, and we can I'll do my best. And I'll do my best to try and answer each of these along with the rest of our team. The um, not entirely sure on the zero to three bedroom discussion and. You may recall, at least I recall, the mayor asking some similar questions in that in one of the meetings. And um, the sewer side is based on equivalent residential unit. And the mayor's questions were, you know, if I've got six bedrooms or one bedroom at that time, or something like that, or if I have. Ten folks in the house versus one pokemons and. Those are all, because there's so many of them in that particular category. When it comes time to calculate an ERU, an equivalent residential unit, it takes a pretty broad range and it includes all of the above that I just mentioned. Anywhere from zero to six bedrooms averages those and then points back to one ERU. And so that, you know, in terms of a single family residence in the sewer. Those tend to be the same because they're. You know, even percent of all of the of the accounts, you know, a very large percentage of the. Uh, from there, then we have a schedule and you'll see a little bit later in terms of the sewer calculation. As I go through the rules and regulations and I can kind of then how is a ERU uh. Dispersed or calculated across a broad range of different uses. From a, you know, a cafeteria to a gymnasium to a school. And, um, you know, somebody did some study and that's why that's in there. But it, you know, it's it's kind of how much water is used, what the sewer could be and what the sewer strengths are. So that is the zero to three bedroom answers, I understand that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam President, I think Woody brought up some great points as well, too. Paying for it later or when it's more feasible um versus doing what we're doing right now. Staff explained why we would start this process now. I think another question, too, is that we've brought up before, I think. I believe if my memory serves me correctly, DEQ in terms of us purchasing this and an organization writing down uh the principle. After we've made X amount of payments or paid half of it, can can you guys explain to the community how that would work? Once we purchase the sewer, do we have uh funding sources, grants, state money, federal money that would come in and pick up a percentage of the tab?
I'm going to start knowing that there's. More educated financial folks in this room as well, although I'm pretty proud of my financial back. That pay for it now versus later, that's a real dangerous equation. Now, you might argue that, you know, inflation over the last few months, especially last year, has really hurt us. There's so many times I get up and say, I wish we would have built this ten years ago before all that. As an example, because, you know, at that time, especially, you know, steel and concrete, some of the things, the guts of this plant, you know. Have inflated tremendously as well as now everything else, you know, supply chain, et cetera, and then recent inflation. I think the equation always boils down to get it done sooner, the better. And so that economic equation versus, you know, nineteen, the other comment was. Nineteen percent versus forty-five percent, et cetera. The the cap, as we discussed, and the revenue requirement for the first year was nineteen percent. The recommended increases over the next two years are also nineteen percent. So three years of nineteen percent increases. Uh, to kind of clarify that other question you had. Um, and then counselor related to the DEQ, yes, we we had a. We had a presentation from Steve James uh and myself on the letter of interest. Uh, which then. Gets us in uh in in terms of an application for a state revolving loan fund. Uh, with the state and the DEQ. A lot of the federal funds are filing through this exact same category, state revolving loan funds, by the way. We hear the trillions of infrastructure, et cetera. This is the 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 most important application to get in because a lot of it comes through the state, through the DEQ, through the SRF. And so that's number one. It can then range anywhere from entirely alone. Or uh, uh, so in other words, we may be borrowing entirely the cost of the plant. Or in this case, depending on the score and our need. If we can have loan forgiveness, they call it, you know, it's kind of grant funding, if you will, up to fifty percent of that cost. And that's obviously certainly what we're hoping for. And that's the state revolving loan fund process. So that's the potential to offset costs in the future related to the DEQ and the state revolving loan fund.
Madam President, if I could add on to this, um, just a little bit. Um, one of the reasons for doing rate increases. Um, over a period of time as to waiting after the fact is to limit. Limit shock impact, sudden unexpected impact to ratepayers. So if we aren't doing incremental rate increases, we can be looking at a rate increase that's a hundred percent. Rate increase, so it's phasing it in um for residents instead of a single rate increase. We have also not uh done a rate study or increased our rates either in water and sewer over ten years. So some of what you're seeing. In rate increases is as a result of uh not having increases for such a long period of time. Particularly in our wastewater fund in order to um buy more time and reduce INI. And hopefully reduce overall costs because of size for a wastewater treatment plant. We've been implementing a number of bridge improvements at the wastewater treatment plant over the last five years. And all of those improvements were paid for by cash um with fund balance. So. Again, we weren't having to go to financing and adding debt on debt to current ratepayers. And um, to build upon what Greg was saying and clarify a little bit regarding um the state revolving loan funds as we discussed with council at a prior meeting. There is a threshold as to what the burden is to our residential ratepayers. That qualifies us for loan forgiveness under the state revolving loan fund. With the increase that council approved uh last year, that nineteen percent increase, that got us to the point. That uh we met that threshold for qualifying for loan forgiveness. Currently in the revolving loan fund program, loan forgiveness. Is fifty percent to greater than fifty percent because of the infrastructure funds. Funds that are flowing through. So reaching that point, that threshold for loan forgiveness can potentially. Make the difference for our ratepayers of a sixty million dollar plant that they're going to have to fund through encumbrance of debt. And we're going to have to fund through rates or a thirty million dollar or less bogey because we are able to get that loan forgiveness. So again, having our rates at that level, if we did not increase rates now, if we weren't moving forward with that incremental increase. We would not qualify for loan forgiveness under the state revolving loan fund. So. It is painful anytime we're doing rate increases. On the other side, the potential with the rate increase is. An overall reduction of total cost of in excess of thirty million dollars. The other balance with rate increases that we have to look at is. With revolving loan fund or any other program where um we are going to be taking on debt. Ultimately, city council cannot make a decision to take on that debt without going to ratepayers and our citizens and asking for a vote. Um, and so that that will be a next step in this process. But when we are looking at debt as well, if we start looking at. Bonds or we are looking at other loans, have to look at other loans beyond. Uh, revolving loan fund, they look at our credit worthiness and fund balance is a part of that. So what our rates are set at, what we have in fund balance. So while it's not desirable at any time to be increasing our rates, the need for increasing rates now is due to the ten years. And then looking at the improvements that are on our horizon and best positioning our cities. Our city and our residents for um the least amount of financial impact as possible. So this has been very strategic in terms of lining ourselves up to hopefully qualify for. Grants and forgiveness for our residents where while it was projected and we talked about last summer that. Um, we would need nineteen percent increases in our wastewater treatment plant. Year over year, we discussed that we would address that on an incremental basis as we know, moving forward, what happens with our applications for. State revolving loan funds, what type of forgiveness is available through that? And there are some other programs, too. That we would look at pursuing on the federal level, but we first step is getting through state revolving loan funded. We expect to know where we lie with that application in terms of ranking and possibilities on that front in the upcoming probably three or four months.
Thank you for that.
Council President. Um, unless anybody had more to add to that. Um, I heard some concern and I think I heard properly, uh, the senior heights district about notice of time and to be involved in the process. I guess my question would be to staff, if you guys could speak more to what would more time of notice, earlier time of notice. Contributed to this decision, what could have been done differently, say, they were given what they felt was a proper notice? Is there anything would have been different, do you foresee in this?
I I will try to answer from my perspective some of that and then.
Yeah, that way we get the whole picture. I.
So we, we are required, we are required to provide notice to um of a public hearing for all of our ratepayers. So that ninety day notice, it's published in the paper, we've had ongoing conversations, so. Whether you're a wholesale user, whether you're a retail user, whether you're on the water side or whether you were on the sewer side. Those notifications went out there and we have had council meetings um that we have been talking about. Rates, rate changes, rate structure for about a year now, I think is about when we started this first with the increase and then the equalization. Um, study. Uh, in terms of where we landed and the increases uh to Seringa Water District. Reminder about previous discussions about that where we landed with the increase with. Seringa Water District was due to the fact that the equalization study showed that Sandpoint City residents. Have been subsidizing wholesale water users. So uh in terms of. Uh, what differences we might have had in terms of what the rate increase was to. A wholesale user as opposed to a retail user. Uh, I think you'll hear from our utilities director that the staff recommendation would have been the same because. That equalization was about really analyzing whether one user is subsidizing another user. We looked across all of the different classes. Of of users in that regard. Um, we, uh, in terms of notification, um, Mr. Blankenship mentioned. Uh, requirement of ninety days notification, a separate notification perhaps to um. To uh the wholesale utility districts that has not been in prior agreements. Um, between city of Sandpoint and Seringa Water District. We are in the process of hoping to negotiate a new agreement with Seringa Water District. Our current agreement is expired. Has been expired for a number of years. Uh, we had sent through revised agreement to Seringa Water District and. About five years ago and um they refused to sign the agreement. So we've been operated, operating under a prior agreement. Um, with the terms carrying forward, but our agreement for all intents purposes has expired. We do have, we have gotten an initial draft over to Seringa Water District. Um, with uh with new terms and an updated agreement. They have requested, as Mr. Blankenship indicated, in an updated agreement that um ninety days notice specifically be provided to. Uh, Seringa Water District, and I think you'll see if hopefully we can come to an agreement on what we can move forward to council. Um, that staff um is is not disagreeable to that request. So. Um, currently in the draft agreement as we're working back and forth, that term is in there, but it is not in our existing agreement. So our notification requirements. Currently are the same as they are for all of our ratepayers and that's through our public notification and posting process notification in the papers.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to also make the comment to Mr. Sherwood's about the enough charges for the sewer fees. Because they were really quite low before, weren't they? I mean, like half of that. And so will the six thousand dollars that will. Pay for growth as he, I I think we discussed that. Rather than having them ten thousand or twelve thousand, because then on the other side, we also talk about, we need more housing. And that might be detrimental to builders saying, you know, I'm not going to build anything else. So. Just to make sure that we all understand that that six thousand dollars does pay for growth. Is that correct?
Um, Madam President, and the uh. You know, I I appreciate his his approach and his concern, you know, and uh. And we certainly had this discussion on growth pays for growth. And that, although especially the one meeting where we came back for a rate update related to jurisdictional capital, we called it. And um, it it's important to note that enough. By state statute, you might remember, um, and Angie, you know, we're all thinking of this one slide. There was a lawsuit related to this. And so then it very carefully dictated the formula by which we could calculate the enough. And so, and I must say, we were about as aggressive as we could get on the map also, just so we know. There was also a chart that compared ours to other areas, you know, and we we bumped up to the top or close to the top in both the water and sewer as a result of that. The NUP itself pays for existing capacity. And that's important to know. It's a buy-in to existing capacity. So it's not really the growth element that we all kind of think it should be or would like it to be, and that's a little confusing. Uh, it's it's already capacity that we have and then you're just simply buying into it. And that's why the formula is relatively easy. We got, you know, four or two million gallons left, you know, this is our. So that's exactly how the NUP is calculated by that formula.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Greg, a couple of questions about the current wastewater treatment center. Some of my most memorable nights here are you bringing props over. And and selling us on these pieces and we've all gotten a world-class education from you since you've been here and we truly appreciate it. Could you maybe remind us and the public what you guys are doing on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis? To keep our current wastewater treatment center going, what some of those costs are. Are we seeking uh companies to machine parts that don't exist anymore? Um, and working with those, I I've seen some of the costs on on that is extremely expensive. Uh, and probably more so than what we would see in these rates going up uh and how that. How that does hit the pocketbook of the city. Uh, I think Jennifer alluded to it a little bit as well, too. But maybe you can give us an update on on what you guys need to do to make sure. Uh, that we're maintaining the current wastewater treatment center to the level of service that we're getting today.
Uh, Madam President, thank you so much, Counselor, for that question. Um, it's near and dear to my heart since I've been here and I. And I empathize with you folks that have been here for years. You know, this topic's been, you know, discussed for twenty years at least as an example. And it all starts with, you know, components of this dating back to the nineteen forties as an example. When you say that, it's a little, you know, exaggerated, but not, you know, that's talking about a lot of the concrete that's currently in the ground. Concrete does or can last a long time, although one of them's so cracked now that, you know, we cannot use it. Uh, and it's what we use for stormwater over for. So there are components of the plant out there that you can't use and that do not use. So we're sitting idle that we would like to, you know. You know, have demolished, you know, for in advance of the plant expansion. But more real is, uh, and I've got two or three examples that since, you know, uh, one of them's, you know, well. Here we are talking sewer, but if if an accident happens, it's sewer and sludge that happens, you know, isn't it? So, you know, when a system fails, when a pump fails, that's what we're talking about. And. I I can appreciate how much our our crews out there know what to do and how to do it. The machine part is an example that I used where there are, you know, parts that we cannot uh that are. Cannot replace at all and therefore do have to have machine parts. Our examples aren't very extreme either, but I know other plants that do that, you know, because they have that capability. Uh, tomorrow I give a presentation similar to this to the Lakes Commission. They've asked me to do this and I put a. Uh, compare and contrast, you know, I've got all very old equipment. And I put a uh compare and contrast, you know, I've got old, very old equipment compared to a recent West Boise tour that I just took and what it could like and should look like. It's all about how the uh it's, there's definitely costs related to this. Um, there's safety, uh there's the ability to take a portion of the plant down so we can repair it. Redundancy and these kinds of things which are also in the EQ code and requirements for the future plant. Uh, so that's a very short answer to a lot of the questions you have. Um, I joke, uh kinda tongue in cheek, uh you guys have heard uh reference to bridge improvements. And that was improvements related to bridging this over till we get the new plant built. Where um uh the tongue in cheek is we're five years into that two-year plan. So that list now has grown. Um, we have a process at the very front, uh it's a uh, it's a well, the the band screen itself, that's the last prop I brought fortunately, but we will have that replaced. But it's gonna take us a year and a half to get that done until then, its belts, its motors, you know, its welding, it's these kinds of things that keep that going. We have a process, a belt press that dries it out at the very end. And just last week, uh we were, you know, pulling our hair out, our crews were trying to get that back online and working. Also very antiquated, the point with the belt press uh is that now it's kinda worked its way up to the bridge improvement category, it wasn't on that list before. It's uh, you know, potentially another three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. What worries us is that, you know, we we hope that we can keep bridge improvements in the future plant. But maybe not, you know, that we were spending all this money, additional money to keep these, the plant running and meeting discharge requirements. And we might have to throw this brand new equipment away because we can't use it in the new plant. But that's a great example of getting it done sooner than later in terms of those bridge improvements.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I have a question, um. The last time we did rate increase, as you said, was like ten years ago.
It's over ten years ago, yes.
So was the DEQ revolving loan funds available at that time?
Uh, there would have been a revolving loan fund program that was available at that time, but what we would not have had ten years ago is our current uh master plan for the wastewater treatment plant. That was a more recent effort. Uh, and um again, that was done several years ago. And the first plan out of that was doing bridge uh bridge improvements over a period of years. Um, both to um increase the efficacy of our treatment, uh which it did. But uh and ensure that we are in compliance with uh our most recent uh discharge permit that we got several years back. But in addition to that, that was um an effort to undertake some additional steps to try to reduce INI. So we did, um for example, we've done uh lining of the pipes. We did the demonstration project in South Sandpoint, which you've had a report on. So those efforts were focused on trying to hopefully with um maximizing our efforts to reduce INI to limit the size of plant that we would need to build and overall the cost to the rate pairs.
So, um the master, so doing the master plan put us in the position that we qualify for the DEQ loan.
It gave us a a plan that then we could move in forward with both the improvements and have a plan that yes, we could qualify to apply for funding.
So once again, a justification for master plan and anybody can read it.
Yes, it is available on our website.
Right, all right, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of the new waste water and wastewater fees and approval of amendments to existing fees and the fee schedule.
So moved.
Sergeant.
This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Grove?
Yes.
Counselors Pro?
Yes.
Motion passes, the new rates and rate changes have been adopted and the city fee schedule is hereby amended. Next, council will consider amendments to the water and sewer rules and regulations. I will now yield the floor to utility director, Greg Lanning.
Council President, you mind if we take a one-minute recess? I think if I leave, you don't have a quorum, is that correct?
Yeah, okay, we will take a two-minute recess. Session will resume.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Uh, the next two items are rules and regulations related to water and sewer. And uh for this one, I've uh I'm gonna just simply scroll through the packet. I I want to apologize, but because usually I have PowerPoint or something like that, but I don't. What what's neat about this is it's strikeout highlights, so it's it's really easy, I think visually to understand it. And it's not uncommon to how you do stuff like this for rules and regulations and legislation, et cetera. Uh, the first one, uh so we'll take both of these, uh I'll I'll speak to both of these and then we'll act on uh the action items after both of them have been presented. The uh first one is uh water rules and regulations. And it's um, it's a, it's a compliment to, if you will, uh city code title seven, chapter six municipal water system. Rules and regulations are usually defined better than code. Um, and interact with it. These were last updated in March of twenty twenty, therefore there aren't a whole lot of changes, quite frankly. I think it was very robust work back then. Uh, as a matter of fact, both these rules and regulations, you know, in my mind, were were only being brought here today because of the rate study itself. There were certain nuances in the rate study that pointed back to the rules and regulations that needed to be changed. As an example, when you get to the sewer rules and regulations, those included entirely the rates, you know, back then. And uh, of course, if we change rates for any reason, we have to change then the rules and regulations. Whereas we completely uh we consider rates under different action. And uh, and so therefore not needed in the rules and therefore taken out. Similar in water, there's a lot of references or there are a few references, I should say, to um uh the fees, the rate schedule and how we collect them, which some of them being picked up uh later in Sarah's presentation on her finance policy. We'll see when we scroll on down, so if it feels like I'm scrolling too fast, let me know. But uh it's just to jump to the point and it's easy to look at uh when we get there. And then um uh, there's a few, yeah, they're all related to but this one goes pretty quick to chapter six, as a matter of fact, so it's gonna be a pretty quick scroll. Yeah. They're right off the top, I can show you how it works. I've tried to highlight everywhere, any insertion now is in red and italicized and the strikeout is a, is a strikeout. You can see um, the rules and regulations have a lot to do with the makeup of, you know, what we expect when you install these utilities, most, you know, so they're a little more, you know, about the physical uh utility than they are anything else, how to apply for a service connection. Here we go, uh first one, responsibility and fees types of, so uh here it is, you know, instead of referencing, oh, these are, this is a minor, uh, you know, in other words, we can find them in the adopted fee schedule. Yes, they're adopted by resolution, but really the terms of art are the adopted fee schedule. Here we go, chapter six. This uh described entirely, you know, uh service charges accounts, uh meter size factor. Uh, water rates, so you know, volume metric charges, this, this is all found in a different place, you know, and some or most of it in, in uh in the following presentation. So this entire chapter was struck out because of that. There we go, some language, terms of art, if you will, adopted fee schedule. When it is needed and it is records. Adopted fee schedule. Any questions?
Yes, I've read it all. So this was I read all of the documents, but this was to remove the rules and regulations separate from the fees.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Anywhere is conflicting or changed to otherwise. Um, you know, to be consistent, I I took them out, we took them out. And um, either in the the recently adopted fee schedule itself addresses it or later in uh some policies and regulations that Sarah will discuss. On the uh sewer side, a little different because it's a little older. The sewer is uh born of and and complements city code title seven, chapter seven municipal sewer system. It was uh last updated in twenty fifteen, so a bit longer. Uh, it's been added to be consistent with recent work on the rate study and the finance policy. It removes the rate schedule itself, uh as I mentioned, the entire, all the features listed in this one. And you'll see where we just simply struck it out. Uh, it also removes in this uh the rules and regs, uh what was appendix B? Is uh, we used to have a sewer agreement, anytime you came in for a sewer connection, you'd have to participate in this agreement. We've since, you know, changed all the way we handle, uh when you come in the door, the application itself takes care of that. And then it uh, uh so we no longer need the agreement is the point. Also, in the twenty twenty updates of the water rules and regulations, it had a similar complimentary uh sewer or water agreement was struck at that time. We just didn't get the sewer regulations at the time, so that was kind of a cleanup item to the system with the uh with the old water rules and regulations. In this one also, there's a reference to a public works director. And we just uh, we no longer have that position, so you'll see uh that one I did count uh quite a few rivers is a but anyhow, you'll see about ten of those as we fly through, so and they'll be redundant also as we go through them. In the contents, there we go, exhibit B sewer agreement struck out in the contents. It's met it right here. Exhibit B also, okay. Here we go, if I could refer to it or, you know, in general to the city, I did, instruct public works director. You'll see later, we needed to be a little more definitive of that and I referred to this position, utilities director. You know, knowing that we have a team of folks that when a new application comes in that reviews the agreements, that's why generally referring to the city, you know, ninety percent of them are rather routine and can be processed to, you know, quickly by others. Uh, those that need uh my scrutiny certainly come to me uh when they do. City Public Works Director, another general reference uh to the city rather than specifically to the position. Public Works Director was just simply, you know, behind them, you know, as you submit them, please submit them in digital format. Um, high requirements, you know. The requirements themselves are fine, thank you very much, and we have an extraordinary circumstance. Uh, our review team will actually bring me in, uh say, Greg, what do you think, you know, should we, you know, do we need this kind? So I am involved and Rod especially is involved, Rod Brigat, our utility supervisor. Other struck a reference to Public Works Director. I like that one, public, yeah, I may refuse or the public works director, I didn't uh may refuse to permission, you know, so that's not necessary, no taps shall be made until sewer permits obtained, period. Please let me know if this is too fast, I, to me, these, you know, I, if there were something I need to spend time on, we'll see later, I will. But I think is important for council to know. If these references weren't needed or changed. Just give me an approved grade, it doesn't need to be designated by the public. I I spent some time at the state level, you know, helping craft state legislation and, you know, any specific reference like this. You know, they do, you know, it shouldn't be that specific uh to a position. And then you wouldn't use terms like must be specifically. We're, we're in good shape, we're okay.
But these changes also make it easier for the public.
Absolutely, right, you know, can you imagine having to go up the chain every time, where's he at, he's on vacation or whatever the reason is. Um, reference. You know, it was about September, a dozen of these. Same deal, just in general, you know, um emergency power, this is how we build the system, this is important. I should say also, um, um, if council could, you know, when the action item comes up, uh you can see that uh it's marked amended or drafted. Um, as we start cleaning these up and take these out in the final format uh to give me authority and, you know, minor changes. Or if in the event I may miss the reference to a public works director, that you allow me to make that minor change as well as part of your uh motion to approve. Public Works Director for review. Uh, good. So exhibit A does talk about fees. And so in this case, you know, a specific enough dollar amount as an example has been struck. These are the ERUs uh we talked about, um, one and uh equivalent resident or a private residential unit ERU. Um, it's interesting, uh somewhere, you know, there's churches and school, you don't find the, and I'm gonna go back to these, by the way. So right down here, you have to go ways down to single family dwelling, one ER. And then everything in this formula is based on that or off of that. And so, I, you know, an ADU, an accessory apartment uh would be half that. You know, you can kinda think intuitively, that makes sense. And apartments, you know, it's not a fully RU, but the number of apartments point eight five, so auto dealership too. I don't know that, but there's somewhere, this is we, I know the front desk asked me, says, please simplify this, you know, and uh if you can, and then especially change it to a different uh methodology. There's a methodology where you measure all the water that comes in in terms of uh, they call it fixture unit accounts. And that would at least be the volume of water that goes down the sewer. But there's also a strength component, you know, for biological or biochemical oxygen demand and these kinds of things. And so I I believe fundamentally that that's built into this. Um, I asked both, uh, we have a wastewater uh uh process going on for the collection system. So we have, we have a uh an engineer engaged on that. And then, of course, we have Angie in FCS, also from the financial perspective, doing the rates for us. I said, could either of you guys please help me make this more simple? And uh about alls we could do really, uh uh they could do for me was show me a bunch of other cities and what they do. And that didn't get me very far, unfortunately. And then the other reason we couldn't really change this a whole lot, I know this is a long story now and I didn't wanna get too far into it, but it We spent a lot of time trying to simplify it, and I couldn't in the end. I hope maybe someday I can come back and tell you that I did. But also fundamentally, this ERU is built into the rate study. So we can't deviate too far from the ERU process in my mind. Such as that fixed unit count, which is volume only. That was important for the enough determination as well as other rates in the sewer. So I, so if it's not on this list, then in the end. There's a statement down here that says, please bring it to me and we'll figure it out. You know. And so I added that to be reviewed and approved by the utilities director. So in that case, you know, specific reference is important to help the front desk. I don't expect the front desk to be. An expert or know this. If it's not prescriptive for them and not easy for them. You know, they'll have to bring it to me, you know, to figure it out. So that's what these edits are. I struck this multiple non meter, you know, some of these it makes sense. You know, why is government so special that we get, you know, per FDU? You know, versus just simply a business office. I felt as if it's already covered. It's similar to a business office. So those are struck out as well. And then. These are adopted by the schedule. There we go. Used to be listed in here, so we struck it all out.
I could just comment on that too, Greg. This is what consistent with what we've been doing is we've been going through policy and procedures updates and council will recall this where there's. Reference to specific people in a policy or whether there is reference to a specific dollar amount. We've typically been taking them out of the policies and going with, for example, city. Because then it's in our administrative procedures who is responsible. And when we've got overall a policy. That references a specific person and we may have turnover or we may have named a position differently, or we may have structured. I mean, who has that authority? That's created some challenges in the administrative structure and is something that happens administratively with some of those changes. So that's consistent with what we've done with other policies. Likewise, what we've done and found in some places in code as we've been working through code updates or. And in policy is references to specific dollar amounts. Council will recall that every year on an annual basis as part of your budgeting process, we also adopt a fee schedule. And we, by Idaho State statute, are only allowed to charge fees in the associated amounts that are on our adopted schedule. So. We do that review annually as part of our process and it runs, creates challenges for us when we have references to. Numbers that were accurate at a point in time, but then have changed over a. A period of time and we get conflicting amounts. So that's why we're referencing the adopted fee schedule and. The community, then there's a public hearing on that every year. That goes out to communities and it's published to the community and it's up on our website. So. These are consistent with cleanup that we've done with sidewalks when that have come forward, special events and all of our other policies and procedures.
Well, and thinking about, I've had to rewrite policy in a number of positions I've been in and simply because of the specificity. It's like this is just too difficult because Joe's not here anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
That concludes my presentation, and I would hope again if. You consider this for approval, the action items are both for. Sort of changes to the rules and regulations. And perhaps any minor edits similar to the ones you saw today. You know, such as references to public works director that I might have missed. If that's, you know, if that makes sense to.
Those are usually de minimis changes and legal has given us authority to make those changes. I did see you missed one when you were speaking.
Right.
Yeah.
We can only do one, but I saw one.
So before we leave this, Greg, thank you for doing all this. It's. So this is house cleaning, house cleaning, you know, I'm currently going through a contract also, and that's what we do. It's part of. The process of keeping things fresh. You know, it's ironic that we're here in spring. We are doing some spring cleaning. This document, however, shows that there was, this is. Butter some. This was not taken off the shelf and dusted off often enough or soon enough. So I encourage you to continue to do what it is that you're doing and for the rest of staff to continue to be diligent with this and. Refreshing everything for somebody that is relatively new up here. It is great to see new material that is current. As opposed to the antiquated documents that we have to deal with because now we're arguing with. Some of our constituents that are having a tough time when we're having a tough time. So this makes conversations much more clear. So I thank you.
Okay.
And you haven't brought a prop the last two times, so. We gotta pick it up.
I said, you're behind me. Any other questions? Okay, so are the, these are both. The next is the resolution, correct? Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No matter present.
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for amendments to the water and rules regulation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the resolution for amendments to the sewer rules and regulations.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Motion passes. For the final item under old business, city council will consider amendments to the city's adopted financial policies and guidelines. I will now yield the floor to Finance Director Sarah Linz.
All right, good evening. The finance policies and guidelines have, were first adopted back in two thousand eighteen. We've done one amendment, Simpson. And this is a additional amendment to include some utility billing cost policies and procedures. Some of these policies and procedures were inside of the water rigs and the sewer rigs that have been removed out of there. And in addition, these are, these are items that have been being done. Currently, they just are now putting it in writing. So a lot of times when there is a customer who, who is asking why something is done that way and. Because it's been done that way. Now it's in writing and we can point it back to this as an adopted policy. So this is. Going to greatly help our front desk when they have questions on especially fees that are added to their, the bills for late payment. So I was going to quickly go through a quick slideshow. On these. The first one I wanted to point out is a guidance. In addition to the billing policies and procedures that you, that you have in front of you, also have. Obviously, we need to consider all these other items, city code, the rules and regulations we just talked about. And other items as well listed here. This is just at the beginning of the policy, just to reference if they're busy reading it, that it's just, this isn't the only thing you need to reference. I wanted just to quickly go through the billing, how it works and ask in any questions you have on that. Utility bills are done once a month, as close to the first as possible. If the first lands on a Monday or on a weekend or a holiday. They're either done the day before or the day after, depending on when they fall. That's kind of at my discretion and, and guidance. The use, usage or service dates that we read on the fifteenth, typically we try to read on the fifteenth again, depends on if it falls on a holiday or weekend. But it's for typically one full month, from the fifteenth to the sixteenth to the fifteenth. Then the bills are prepared after that and sent out on the first. They are due by the twenty fifth of that month unless again is a weekend or holiday. And they are due again that next month, that next working day by noon. And this is all detailed in the policy. So these are just, this is just a quick summary of what's in there. Late notices are sent out to customers if they're not paid by that day or the late fee that is charged. If it's not paid by the third Monday of the following month, the status changes to water off. That's not a, like a status we change. Just. We just move them to a new list now of water off. Door hangers are, are put on the doors that next, on that Tuesday following that Monday. And if they're still not paid by the end of the business day on Wednesday, the water is turned off and locked and delinquent charges added to the account at that time as well. Accounts will accrue fixed base rate charges because they're not utilizing any. Usage unless they cut the lock, which you get is now a new fee that I have added as the thing. It's not on our fee schedule yet, but it will be presented in the fall. Through this process, I found quite a few things that, that I have added in here that are not fees. So we'll see a few of those come in the fall to see, you know. Anyways, the, they do accrue a fixed base rate until paid. And at the very last resort, if they're still not paid, we do certify these to the property taxes as special assessments once a year. And ultimately then what happens is it rolls onto their tax rule and then it's collected by the assess or the, by the county. And then they send us back a check for that. If they still don't pay those, then they go through the process of the county. Going in the house and doing the whole deed process, which that's, that's several years down the road. So. Hopefully it never gets to that point. We have never had, at least since I've been here, we've never had one get to that point in our, on ours. So. All right, new, new utility users, so two kind of users, new services completely. They go through a new connection procedure that's down in planning and building. They have to pay their fees. With that, then the, from the billing side of things, they are, when the water is activated or turned on by the city, that's when the billing starts. We also then have established services. So if that new user decides to sell their house. In the future, then that is a established service that's already there. They then now go to. The, the policies and procedures in front of you and they set up a new account, online form. And they are now a new user established with established services within our system. The account in this policy, the account is the responsibility of the property owner and remains in the property owner's name. I wanted to next go through a, just a quick few points of why this is a change from what we currently do. Right now, we have tenants. We will change the bill and put it in the tenants' names. They, what's in front of you is proposing that that account remains in that property owner's name. Just one of the examples is unpaid tenant bills after they move out and all parties refuse to pay. As an example, one of the accounts, we had over sixty emails and multiple phone calls trying to collect this account. Finally, after about six months, we finally ended up collecting it from the property owner. But that, when I actually literally started counting the emails on Michelle's computer, I was appalled. I did not realize that it was taking this much time behind the scenes. Not only with the tenant who has now moved to a different house and that's not. Their problem anymore. And then also to the property management company who also was, well, that's in their name. That's not our problem. And then the owner, well, that's the tenant's problem. That's not my problem. So I mean, it, it, it was, it was interesting to watch the whole correspondence and emails up. The phone calls and. And then also that, so going on that theme or that we do not turn off that water because about that time, there's a new tenant in there. So we don't go turn off that water. Because they're now paying their bill and it's current.
May I have, may I have a clarification question? So the actual bill though is still in the tenant's name, right? Because. I know the responsibility now will be the property owner because some people have to use their bill. Like for credit things or to say, look, I can show I paid my utility bill for six months in a row. So will the utility bill still be in the. Tenant's name, but the responsibility will be the.
That is not in this policy for. This or a company, yes, that is, that's still a possibility to put the, the name of the business on it for tax purposes and whatnot.
Right.
That is not in this policy. We did call around to several different agencies and or different organizations, water districts. In other cities and we were by far the, there was one other one that was doing it, but most, nobody else, hardly anybody else is doing this, this tenant billing on their behalf. So there are other things you have W twos, you have, I mean, there are other things that have your, if you want to get. I'm sinking in progress licenses.
Right.
I wouldn't, I didn't even use my utilities. I use my W, you know, you have W twos, you have other things that you can use for that purpose too.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
That didn't seem to be a hindrance when I talked to the other cities about this. The most notable one that we talked to was Coraline. And they, they, they are very adamant that they were not doing the. The back and forth of this. And the, I guess the, on this slide is the reasons why I've, why I'm suggesting that we don't do it.
Okay, thank you.
A house sells within the city and nobody is made aware of the sale because tenants are paying the bills. So we find out. Six months later that this house has been sold. We have now nothing signed in paperwork that we could even turn this over to tax collections, even if it was in the tenants or in the property owner's name. So that's something that we see after quite frequently. We do, the, in town, we do have assessments that are made once a house does sell. They, they send us an assessment of how much is going on that property. That doesn't mean it went through though. That's still the responsibility of the owner to, to discontinue the services. But if it's not in their name, they're not worried about it because they're not paying that bill. So they're not, they're not that, they're not disconnecting or they're not telling us about that sale. And the new owner, their tenant's paying. So they, again, they'll have to sign up for anything. So we, there's, there's a. A gap of, of ownership that's not being caught. I was actually didn't realize that that was so prevalent, but when I started talking with Michelle, that was actually happened quite frequently. Multiple bills changes every month. Just this last month, we had a tenant who moved out. They, so it goes from the tenant to the property owner and then they got a new tenant. So five days later, it went back into that new tenant and then five days later, they moved out. So it moved, you know, had. We have, and then in that month, we had four bills going out, two dollars, two dollars, three dollars, you know, I mean, it's. It becomes, and then she's chasing down a dollar here, two dollars there. So that, that's another, just an example. One service address, I asked her to say, give me the one that has the most changes ever. And she pulled up this one. She's like, oh, this one. It was ten, over the ten years, it was thirty changes. And that was again too, they would, I don't think it even changed. I don't, I didn't ask this question, but, or we didn't go back and look to see if it had actually changed a, a property owner. But there was thirty tenants moving in and out of that in ten years, which doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it's three times a year. It adds up. The city, this one is actually very frequent. The city has put in the middle of a tenant and disputes. We have several leaks over the winter time that happen and the owners won't fix it because the tenants are paying the bills. So they, they, the tenants call and they're like, well. That we know that the water, I can hear it in the wall, I think was one that we heard. I can hear it running in the wall and then we're like, we'll call your landlord. Well, the landlord didn't come fix it. That's not our fault, but we're not going to call landlord and we can tell them to call that landlord. They didn't come fix it. The tenant actually ended up. I mean, there's a lot more to the story, but ended up moving out because it didn't get fixed. And then, then we were stuck with trying to get that. The tenant's not going to pay it. They're not my water. I didn't use it. It was in the wall. And so it just becomes that we are in the middle of the tenant and property owner disputes. Out and the very last thing I wanted to, why, I believe that we should have, having the counter meaning in the property owner's name is the outstanding bills, uncollected bills. Ultimately collected through the tax certification, which is the property owner. If it's in the tenant's name, technically that's not the property owner. So that is the. There are multiple more reasons, but those are the big, the big reasons. With this policy, I wanted to point out the big. The big changes of what we are doing currently to what is in this policy. The tenant moves in and out. The properties can still, all properties can still elect to send monthly billings to property management companies. So if they have those, they can be sent to them. They can pay them on their behalf. The commercials can elect to have business saved on the billing statements. And then also this, this change will be phased in and all property owners will be notified in this well in advance. This isn't going to be a surprise. This will be. Letters going out, I'm sure several phone calls and notifications. We've had several, actually today, somebody came in and wanted to puzzle thing in the tenant's name. We're like, hold on, this is being talked about tonight. And, you know, just wait till tomorrow. And I mean, in, so we're already getting these questions and just. I know that they're going to be handled well at the front desk. Just put it that way. It's not going to be a surprise. And, and it's not, we take payment from anybody. So it's not that tenants can't come pay. They can still be passed on. The bills can still be passed on to those tenants if they need to. We can set up on our system, a, a tenant, a, a bill that would go to the tenant is assessed tenant and then the address. We can do that if we want, you know, there's multiple different things we can do within the system. To send bills to multiple different people if we don't, if we want to. Season off for irrigation only. Right now, season off can be done for. Basically any classification. The way our new structure is, is, is structured or new rate structures are structured is that we have a base fee. We don't have an, a. Usage amount that's a mandatory usage or a build usage, minimum usage build. So now that we have that, the face, the base fixed rates. That's how it was factored into the whole rates that everyone's paying those for the whole year. The users are, so that season off for non irrigation accounts. Will, they can still turn on and off, but not actually do a season off. The season off, what they would do is they would actually not. So season off, what they would do is they would actually not pay any fees at all for um, any water sewer garbage at all for that, for whatever period they wanted to. Irrigation is different, it's just water and it's only winter time. So they pay it really to, to turn off that so it doesn't um leak and whatnot. Um, residential leak policy, it's adding the commercial customers into this policy. Um, in the past, um, that you, we would bring, come, we didn't have a policy that addressed a commercial customer. So we would bring each one of those to you guys to approve. Um, so this just wraps in the commercial to the, with the residential, um, so that we follow a policy. And a new account that we set up with email billings, um, this is something that's already currently happening. Um, when they, it's all online, so they have to use their email address anyway. So to me, I'm, it's, I just wanna put it in policy that the, all new ones at this point will be set up that, and there is no other option. And that just saves on the backend, they get the emails directly to them. They can't say that the, the post office lost them, we get that a lot, that we didn't ever get it. Well, it was in the mail, I just can't tell you, well, with an email address, it's, we can go behind the scenes and we know you got it, you know, so it's not, it's, it's much less um, user or not user, um, error for not getting the bill, put it that way. Um, and last but not least, the scrub program. This was also something that was in the um water rigs, rules and regulations that we pulled off or out of there and put it into here. Um, we did receive a um, a email from a president in town. Um, and I think you guys all got that, so I wanted to address that as we're doing this as well. Um, I'm going to scroll then. So in this, um, this was established back in nineteen seventy seven. And um, I am, uh, we are proposing to add this additional language into the policy that you already were given. So the redded underlined is the new part that we are um, suggesting to add into here along with that um scratched or the um lined out down below too as well. Um, the, we are suggesting or asking you to approve that we, the current people who are already on the program to basically grandfather them into the program. And then we do have other programs out there, the one we just um, we just approved on July tw- uh, two thousand and twenty-two, we brought to you was the Idaho Department of Health and Welfare Low Income Home Water Assistance Program. Um, we now, uh, about twenty a month are coming through that, basically they go to them, we do, we um, refer them to them. They approve them and then they send us a, a check for all those people they've approved. We have about twenty of those a month coming through that are using that program on any given month. So um, that is just one example of a different program that's out there. So our suggestion is to um grandfather in these, they still have to be um annually renewed, they still have to qualify every year. Um, but then to phase that out, um, as, as they phase out, so. That would be our change or our um suggestion on that. Anything you wanna add to that one?
Um, what I would note with um, these types of uh assistance programs, I'm familiar with them and other jurisdictions uh where we have been and typically um, uh, these types of programs where there is a reduction in utility charges or sometimes you see them where there will be reduced enough hookup fees for um low income residents. Um, recommending that this go to other programs is actually consistent with what you see in most other jurisdictions where they're either using a state program or they're using a federal program or for larger communities where they're getting a direct allocation. Um, many of them commonly use their CDBG funds um through HUD. And the qualifying factors for our scrub program are um HUD, HUD income qualifications. Uh, so in the case of what we're doing with the program, it's entirely housed within the utility fund. And in this case, it would be through outside funding sources actually picking up costs for um those residents that qualify for programs and are unable to pay their charges.
And I did wanna note that there's about, any given year, there's about twenty-five customers that are on that at this, at this time. Um, and there were a few of the questions that were, um, that were in that email. And um, if you want me to address each one of them one by one, I can. Um, the, the majority of them are actually things that we were already doing, we already required income for all houses. Actually, it wasn't even us, that's, that's snap, SAP requires that, so that's, it was just really putting it in writing what was going on, so it's, it's in here. Um, um, proof of income, they already brought in their tax returns, they already brought in all that stuff, but whatever, we just, um, if they didn't have tax returns, it was bank statements, it was something to prove that they did not make over that dollar amount. Um, and then the sixty-five um years, that is the, the one change to this policy was the um, the property owner needed to be the applicant. Um, because the whole, the whole, um, the rest of the policy changed to be the owner, it's in the owner's name, so that just followed suit with that as well. And it made the owner, the actual property owner be sixty-five versus just somebody in the household, it was the actual applicant needed to be that, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Think that addresses all that. Now, the only other one I saw actually is the water, cause this was only in the water rules and regulations. However, since um, I've been here and actually since um, I asked Michelle and ever since she's been here, this has been across the board. It's been water sewer and garbage, it's been all three utilities, that was, that was why that was changed to say utilities, cause that's what had been being done, so.
Thank you.
Yep, great.
Any questions? Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for amendment to City of Sandpoint Financial Policies and Guidelines, utility billing policies and procedures.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. And finally to new business, uh, for the final item on the agenda this evening. Staff seeks approval to fund a project for some repairs and remodeling at the Sandpoint Fire Station. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'll have Chief Neil Kreese come up and answer any questions that you may have as well.
We gotta have some questions.
He can speak to the condition of our Sandpoint Fire Station. Um, what we have before you is um for uh consideration to allow us to move forward with a repair and remodel project for the Sandpoint Fire Station. Um, as council is aware, we had a roof leak over the winter, our, our uh roof failed. And the brunt of the failure was actually in our fire department, particularly in their living quarters. So right now in our fire department living quarters, we've got part of the ceiling removed, we have damage to the carpet. We've got paint and drywall damage um up in their living quarters. Uh, we did file a um claim with ICRIMP and received a reimbursement for damages of close to uh twenty-five thousand dollars, which is to fund drywall repair, painting and replacement of the flooring. Um, while at it, uh, our fire station is um, has not been repainted. Our flooring um is much in need of replacement, so this is an opportunity while we're at it with part of the station to do some cosmetic repairs um throughout the station. So um, we are proposing that we move forward with a project that would be repainting, addressing drywall issues and replacing all of the floor coverings throughout the fire station, both in the office areas as well as in the living quarters. And um, finally, we've also have some plumbing issues in uh the restrooms, both in the living quarters as well as downstairs in the restroom that council members use. Uh, and so we have some fixture replacements proposed as well as um some general um plumbing improvements to address the problems that we're having in the restrooms. Um, we have some budget savings in our budget line that was approved by city council for uh upgrades in the fire department as well as the second hall remodel. So what we could propose is that we reuse our budget savings for these other remodels that we've done in city hall to get over and provide the love to the fire department and then offset our costs to with uh reimbursement from uh ICRIMP. So estimated costs by um our architect who's worked on the other projects is under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. Again, we'll have approximately a twenty-five thousand dollar. Um, we already have those proceeds from ICRIMP that will offset the costs to the project. In addition to having leftover funds in the um, in the remodel budget, this would use probably the last amount of ARPA dollars that we have. Um, we've invested our upper dollars in the city primarily in one-time capital projects because they are one-time dollars, not ongoing dollars. So we've used them for ADA improvements, for improvements to our restrooms with touchless facilities, for security improvements throughout city hall, for our um video conferencing and uh telecom, telecommunications improvements in council chambers as well as in our conference rooms throughout city hall that allow us to function in person and simultaneously um electronically and for people to participate during our meetings. Um, and whether they're a conference or meeting with a few people or whether it be a council meeting or a planning and zoning meeting. So this would be the last of our ARPA dollars. And Chief, I will let you make your plea for your particularly boring.
Yeah, it's um, it, it just did, I think it just, it has been needed it for a while. It just ended up that the leak happened and that's when life happened. So the, the flooring is the, is one of the bigger issues as well, cause it's carpet and having carpet inside a fire station is like, that's a, I think that's the first time I've ever seen that in my life, that's like a, it's like a terrible decision. Um, but it would, it would just kinda help us out, you know, and get uh, get, you know, the more, more use out of that, of the facility in the long run. So, you know, just switching that stuff out, so that's a, if, if it goes through, then it would be in uh that first part of May, I think is what our timeline looks like. Uh, our crews would move out and we would move them into the Dover Station while the work was happening here. So they would be, you know, still, still be taken care of, it wouldn't have to put them in tents or anything, so that, that would work out, so.
Okay.
So any questions that you guys had?
Very, very well earned and deserved, it's very exciting. There's, you know, been some deferred maintenance in this building that I'm glad we're finally getting on top of. Uh, water is our friend. The irony on, on fire is, is there as well as it's, it's really nice to see that the police and fire, our, our police and our fire get along so well that they're able to, you know, help each other out.
It's, it's no problem, I have, there's a desk that went missing, I'll have to file a report for that one, I think, but other than that, I think we got it all worked out.
Any other questions, counsel? Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Sandpoint Fire Station Repair and Remodel Project.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. And with no further business, before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at eight thirty-seven.